Do enough of these.
I would tell you.
This is pretty boring.
I know it's boring.
It's good to see you.
Mr. Mayor, since you've had a vote in the recess, you'll have to have a vote, a motion to come out of recess.
Well, of course we do. So I entertain a motion to. I've got a motion to and a second. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now reconvened. Thank you, Mr. Don, for your valuable input. Once again, this is a budget briefing by the city staff to the council and 2324 budget. The floor is yours, Mr. Lyons.
All right. Let Mr. Harrison get settled down here real quick. You missed the barbecue. All right, I'd like to start by recognizing the staff that supported this document tonight. There's a tremendous amount of work that goes into producing this document each and every year, and it starts in the month of January when the enterprise funds or the inter-service, not enterprise, but the inter-service funds all begin doing their budgets well in advance so that those numbers can be used throughout the rest of the budget. The enterprise, the inter-service funds are public works, admin, fleet, surplus, risk management, and health benefits. Those numbers are required in order to, to create the base of the budget, and then we do a revenue projection. So that is the beginning of the budget, and then the department heads, based on a budget message from me with the, with the guidelines for them, are then given time to submit their budgets, which are then reviewed by, by staff. This year, the staff review was done by, by Vaughn Sullivan, Ryan Rushing, wherever, I think Ryan's back there, Ryan Rushing. Sarah Hancock was our volunteer this year that volunteered to sit through. We try to do some mentoring with the other staff to give them an opportunity to see what it's like to sit through the review process and understand what goes into all the, the ingredients of, of this large pie that we bring forth to you tonight. And then, of course, Tia Tia and his staff, they are, they produce the monumental stages of putting this stuff together, and, and I will have to say, this was, in my 23 years, this was the best, I think, the finance department ever has done handling the budget and being timely and being accurate. So, good job, Tia Tia and your team. So, having said that, just an overall approach that we normally take, and it's no different in the past 23 years that we've done this process, is overall, we look at kind of our strategic plan. We look at the comprehensive fiscal sustainability that we talked about during the staff or the council retreat, and looking at, looking at overall, kind of use that as an overall guideline for staff and for me specifically to use to try to, try to meet the strategic guidelines that the council sets for us. This year, the council focused on the maintenance, other than the sustainability of, of the fiscal sustainability, the maintenance of new parks and facilities, as all the geo-bonds, the major corridors, studying those and looking at some process to start improvements at two main corridors, primarily Air Depot and 23rd Street. We talked about urban renewal and the use of urban renewal in the city, specifically Heritage Park Mall being one of those. The hospital district, beginning process to, to look at renovating City Hall to 1969 model that has had some facial things done, very little facial work internally. A lot of the organs have not ever really had a lot done to it. So, this is a example of what can be done with about half a million dollars in this one room that is an example of what can be done. So, that is a part of this budget. Major infrastructure studies are certainly a part of this budget, as we discussed during the, during the retreat. Comprehensive plan update, quality-of-life survey, and important items such as a market wage study, and then I want to talk about incentive to live in Midwest City. So, with that, let's start on page one. So, this is the general government sales tax, R-09 account. This is an account we started in 2011, '12, and then made an increase to it in 2017, '18, when the .75 sales tax was increased primarily for, for police and fire, but also the general fund was certainly upside down at the time, so this helped stabilize the general fund. The reason it helps stabilize the general fund is because we took capital outlay out of this fund, and we took the city manager's office and the general fund, overall general fund, out of this budget, moved it out of the original O-10 general fund account into the general government sales tax account. So, it helped, it helped on the expense side, which we'll get to in a minute. So, overall, you can see that on the revenue side, there's 5.5 million with expenditures of 5.63 million. Of that's coming out of capital outlay. And then the, the 2 million that comes in for revenue is from the general, or 2.5 million on transfers in is for starting, putting money back for a remodel. On page three, you can see the capital outlay. We had about, if you take 2.5 million out of there, it's about 1.1 million in capital for all the general fund departments excluding police and fire. This is all the general fund, as you can see, and broke down by department. Street Department usually gets the lion's share of the money because they're the most expensive to operate out of the general fund. There's $251,000 worth of, of expenditures, some of which are multi-year funding, like a dump truck that costs a lot of money. So, we break those into two and three-year funding buckets that, so we don't exceed our revenue in this fund. Sure. Yeah.
So, actually, two questions. One, on the city hall remodel.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure where about 30 to you, and do you want to go about that again? We mentioned the war trying to get some kind of space for council members to use to be able to pay the votes. So, I'm not sure where the remodel is going, but again, that's something that could be.
Okay, we can take that into consideration. Vaughn, are you going to be the scribe?
Yes.
Thank you.
We've got, we'll make sure that's in the notes.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have to hire an engineer to do space studies and all that to really seriously manage this thing. It's going to take a few years, honestly, before we'll ever have enough money really to get started, but we'll do the engineering to begin with.
It's one of the things we've talked about recently, the official particles of issues for, you know, people who start to be in a public space or have a special, or was the first type of thing, it's not a public space, so the fact that it's very, it's part of that project. And then the other question I have is on the, is the A4 pickup, if there's some reason that you like to make services. I'm a little lost on that as far as why we need a $47,000 amount for that for, and it's the A4 for internet services.
So, baseline pickup, bought four of them this year, is $39,000 for, for no, no carpet, three-quarter ton, half-ton, four-wheel drive. We try to buy four-wheel drives because of the inclement weather, and those vehicles are loaned out to the police department doing inclement weather, so there's, there's not much of a price difference. And then you've got to throw in the safety lights and bringing those things up. It's, that's about what it costs. Forty-seven might be a little, a little too much, but next year, prices will go up, and I was happened to get a deal on, on four, for the trucks.
Well, underneath the vehicle sizes, we have, we have equipped that for 23 years, so.
Yeah.
You can't stop by that, so it'll be less, but I was just curious where make services on that is.
Yeah. The library chiller is a one-time requirement. I'm glad you brought that up. I had that marked. So, it's $150,000. So, we own the library. Part of our operating agreement is that we maintain the library. So, I think we actually split the cost in half. So, it's actually $300,000.
Tim, I was just going to add that if council asks any question, if you could turn your microphones on, because we are live streaming, and we, we don't pick up those questions. All we're hearing is Tim's responses. Thank you, guys.
Also, you see a fiber optic line. I should have had while Ryan was there. We're looking, putting another fiber optic line in in order that we have two points of access to fiber for internet, and that'll go into the parks. You'll see that split in multiple places. Parks, PWA, pool, so we'll run a line in between, so we'll have redundancy.
And is that one of the ones we're going to get assistance with from Blue Peak, the new fiber carrier at some point?
I don't think we're getting any help on that one, are we, Ryan? From Blue Peak?
I know it's going to be a minute before they come.
And that'll be our own line. We won't share that with anybody either.
On the remodel, I've, I've heard some conversations, and it may have been at the State of the City address, where I think the mayor was maybe proposing rebuilding City Hall. I don't want to speak for you, but I just want to make sure if we're going to do remodeling that we're not going to then turn around and duplicate.
Yeah, if we make the decision, we'll do the engineering study. I think that will help guide us for the, for the plan use. And at that point, it, yeah, we're not going to spend a bunch of money. This isn't going to touch anything anyway, but it's just a start. But it could go towards, if the council decides they want to go out for a geo-bond with the citizens and ask for, for the building of a new City Hall, then, yeah, we would, we would use that for engineering or something else. So, no, I wouldn't do that.
Thank you.
That's a good question. I appreciate that. Other questions on the capital within the, the general fund? These are all great questions. Bathroom remodeled in the senior center, $50,000. That's a third-year funding. That's very expensive. These bathrooms are really expensive to, to remodel, so that's the final year, I think, Vaughn, right? And we can do it next year?
We hope so.
Okay. So, we should have about $150,000 for those bathrooms. Any other questions on O-9? These are all good questions. Let's go to the next page, which is the general fund overview, fund balance review, page four. So, I want to start on, when you look at this fund, we, we look at our sales tax, and as we've said today, we are, versus our projection, we're about 12.62% over, year-over-year, over, or, or projection, 12, 12% over what we projected we were going to take in for the year. So, it's, it's roughly $5 million. All that money goes to fund balance, which has created these fund balances in here and in police and fire. So, the difficult thing for us is we have to be Nostradamus here, and we have to determine what, what are we going to project for the fund balance next year? I've talked to some of the other city managers. Some of them are a little bit more riverboat gamblers than I am, and they're projecting increases year-over-year for next year. I still continue to talk about the recession and, and what kind of recessionary impact we could have on, on our economy. At what point does, do we start seeing a decline? I've lived through a recession here as an assistant city manager, and we froze positions and worried about paying, paying our bills. So, the position I took, and I shouldn't say me, I mean, I'm the one presenting, but this was a collaborative effort with Tia Tia and, and his chief assistant, who has a massive spreadsheet that analyzes this. This isn't just Kentucky windage. We have a massive Excel spreadsheet that's very impressive that looks at three- and five-year revenue income throughout the city, and it does modeling for us. And the modeling with the impact of COVID and with this recession is a little bit scary. So, we all agreed as a staff that we felt good about averaging the last two years. So, last year, where the projection came on, came from was a three-year average. We averaged the last three years, okay? So, for this year, a little bit less conservative for me is averaging the year we're in and last year. And so, that's what the revenue, the revenue projection is for this year. It's not this year, I meant. The year we're in today, 22, 23, 21, 22. So, that's, when you see the numbers, you can add them up. That's where the two-year average came from. So, that is the revenue that we use to build all the budgets in the general fund. It's a revenue we use to, to build police and fires budget. So, you can see a revenue of 45 million, 278, 289. We're projecting that we're going to have a revenue of 46 million, 740 for this year, and the sales tax continues to stay on pace. It may even go up a little bit over that. And we're looking at expenditures of 47 million, 965. However, and then we did the transfer. If you take the 2.5 million dollar transfer out of there that we're taking and moving over to O-9, just to put in reserve for the remodel or the beginning of remodel, we would be at about negative 186,757. So, that revenue projection with the expenses, with cost of living, with the cost of insurance, with the cost of supplies going up, with all the expenses going up, we would be right at, we would be pretty close to breakeven, 186,000. So, that's a pretty, pretty balanced budget. And that's, that was our goal as we go through. This is the primary sheet that we use. We use this, and then we work backwards with these departments, and we use a box of red pins, and that's how we back it. So.
Ken, can I read something that is a little bit over my head because I'm not a math student?
Okay.
But I did, some of the residents that have been reviewing the budget, I asked them to send any comments, questions, and, and I'm going to read something that it sounds like is another language to me, but states, "Third concern would be the net loss that is reflected in the overarching budget." I understand that across the country, from the federal to local level, tax revenues have fluctuated significantly since the start of the pandemic. But that, this cannot be the only reason in this case, as the budget shows a revenue drop of a bit over 1 million from fiscal year 2023 to 2024, yet there is an expenditure increase of over 3 million. Overall concern would be, how did the city go from a positive 3 million to a negative 2 million in the span of two years? If that question is articulated in a coherent way that you guys can understand, if you guys can respond to that.
And that's really basically what I was, what I was trying to say is that the, the revenue is down because we averaged the revenue versus actual, because we don't know what's going to happen in the recession. We don't want to inflate the revenue, and then you don't, you've got to live within your means. Well, you don't have the means because you don't have the money coming in, so you go to the fund balance. So, the other part of that is why the expenditures is 47 million is because of the 2.5 million dollar transfer coming out of there. If you take, once again, if you take that transfer out, it's, it's pretty much, it's a balanced budget. It's within 186,000.
Thank you for breaking that down.
No problem. Okay. If you really are bored at night, take page five and six and study that and average those all together, and we'll go to page seven. Seven is just a general view of all departments. I'm going to walk through those real quick. And if there's any questions, just stop me. But once again, the cost of living at 3% is included in here, and the 2.25 health insurance, health insurance is going up 4.5. 2.5% of that is paid by the city, 2.5%, or 2.25 is paid by the city, 2.25 is paid by the employee. So, once again, those, those are included in these numbers, and they were included in that overall big number that I gave you to start with. So, let's move through to page, page 12 is just the transfers out, funnel through. Remember, 62% of all the money that comes into the general fund goes out to other places, mostly police and fire. Okay, O-10 is city clerk's budget. There is nothing new on that budget. It's a $100 difference. The next budget's human resources. I point out in human resources, I included the market wage study, $3,000. There'll be more money coming from Public Works to match that. But as we talked in strategic planning, that that was something that we were going to do.
I know this is broken down over the different departments, but I did have a question, though. Like, most of the departments are showing a charge for shred it, which I totally understand, documented destruction. I'm just wondering also, as an aside, I would love to see us be able to do a public shredding event for citizens of Midwest City. Lots of different banks do them type of thing, particularly after tax season is over with type of thing, and give citizens a, you know, half-day on Saturday where they can bring things in. I don't know if shred it would work something out with us in terms of, we're a large consumer, a large contractor.
We've actually done that before.
I was wondering if we could.
We have.
Bring it back, because I thought it's in a minute.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I, you know Sarah. That's Sarah's, Sarah's project.
Some, could we just put it on the list as a maybe thing to ask?
Yeah, yeah, we'll put a list.
I mean, it looks like paying them a little sum of money. Maybe they could do a community event for us type of thing.
Okay. I haul mine to the bank every time they do one.
I know. I just.
FNB.
TFCU is doing a number of them type of thing, almost one a month type of thing. But I just, it'd be nice if we could have one annually. I mean, if we could get shred it to work.
We'll look into it and see, see what the deals.
Sorry, I took off your.
Sarah Hancock, by the way.
I don't know. You can handle it, Sarah.
City attorney. City attorney, small budget, one city attorney, roughly $2,000 increase to that budget. Community development, so this budget. Community development, so this budget actually went from 835 down to 811 because we, we. Well, not just, yeah, we split those departments, but we also, really not from 22, 23. That was 21, 22 is why there's such a huge number of 1.8 million. That's when we split department. But we, when Billy left, we took that position and put it through RDB squared program and rewrote the job description. So it actually lowered the cost of that position because if you remember, community development had a bunch of departments, GIS, plant engineering permits. All that is gone under Brandon Bundy. So anyway, that's why that number went down so significantly. We did, under contractual, include $120,000 for a comprehensive plan as we talked about strategic planning once again. So whether we need to do a full update or not, but we will be prepared whatever we need to do. We do have, I can't announce a name. I really, 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 really wish I could, but we are working a candidate through the process currently for that position. I should say. And they're going to be really, really good too. Just going to tell you now. All right. Parks and Rec, Josh Ryan's department. That's really significant, this budget.
Okay, I have a question again. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So we've had some conversations about contracting out mowing expense for parks as well as trails, etc. So is there a number that, I'm not smart enough to differentiate, if it's upkeep of real property or if it's contractual, that represents what that cost is going to be? And I think those contracts haven't been fulfilled yet. I mean, I think they're still at the RFP stage type of thing, so.
Yeah, you're, remember the street department really maintains the parks. They used to be in this budget many years ago and they were taken out and put in the street department and they were merged together. But we have talked about that. When we get to the street budget here in a minute, in two pages.
Right.
That we did, we did add two additional personnel to that department.
Right. Those are FTEs, but we are doing contracts, so I wasn't seeing the bump for a contract fee in the street either, so I wasn't sure where it came in.
We're working toward FY 24, 25 contract mowing. Since we're already into this season of mowing, we've got a lot of preliminary, we've got a year's worth of preliminary work to do before we can bid those contracts. So it will be in the FY 24, 25 budget.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. I know this isn't specifically budget, but let me just peel this back. So I understood we were going to put them out to bid for this year's services, so we're just going to run this year's services with the current employees we have?
Correct.
Even though we had all the problems last year with trying to keep things mowed? Like, we're still just going to stay status quo? We're not going to contract it out?
Correct. We're almost fully staffed this year in public works as opposed to last year being down about 15% employment. So I feel pretty confident we'll be able to maintain it.
And we're able to get laborers now that we had to go up $2 an hour. You'll see that in a minute.
Okay. So we're going to do it with FTEs except for 24, 25?
24, 25, we'll have everything in place to bid out contract.
We're going to take a bigger look at it then.
Okay, okay. Because I wasn't seeing the numbers in either Parks and Rec or Streets, so that's why I was trying to clarify. Okay.
I have something I'd like to, and another comment or feedback from one of the residents was the lack of funding towards parks and recreation. In the budget, a little over 600,000 is allotted for this category, which is more than what was given in 2021. But I feel that this department should receive a lot more funding to improve parks throughout the city and not just to select a few. And also to create a fund to start looking into the development of new parks in areas of the city that lack parks in their immediate vicinity. And I think our vice mayor has been an advocate for this. And would I be incorrect just to inform our residents that part of the bond issue that we are advocating for?
Sales tax.
So I'll let you elaborate on that. So just to share that in case they didn't catch last month's meeting.
Sure. So, yeah, they're correct. And the only way we're going to correct these issues with the parks is to take our sales tax, the .4015 that we've talked about, that's going towards paying for the sewer treatment plant, is to put it into capital improvements, which is, and we'll see all the reasons why as we go through this, but the only way we're going to correct that is to get 20% of that money will go towards parks.
We're not going to supplant any money. We're not going to.
No.
I mean, this is, we're going to still have our parks budget, but if the sales tax passes, that's in addition to what we already have.
That's absolutely right, because these are dedicated monies anyway when we get into 123 and some of these other accounts. So, yeah, they won't be supplanting anything. That's a good point. Okay. Let's go make some of these other budget codes quicker. Tia Tia's budget, if you want that, we can do that right now. These are pretty small numbers. And to the streets, we just talked about adding the two FTEs, which we had talked about last year and we didn't do it, you guys had authorized it. We didn't do it because we couldn't get personnel. So there wasn't, it didn't really matter. So, but we're in a good position. Our recruiting is going very well and our new software, I saw platform is working very well. We are, I think this month that Rand Troy told me, we have gotten literally five times the amount of resumes or applications that we normally get.
And I think I heard one of y'all say, maybe two. So that's part-time people that we're going to hire?
Contract laborers.
So we really are going to do, we're not going to have a company contract to come in and do the mowing, but we're going to have contract laborers, correct, help us with the mowing? Is that what the, how we're getting at that?
Our proposal would be, in the FY 24, 25 budget, would be to do more contract mowing. In other words, contract with ABC Lawn Mowing Service or XYZ Lawn Mowing Service. I mean, we maintain hundreds of acres and.
So this is, this is $240,000 of contract labor, which equates to a $2,000, $2 an hour increase year over year. And these people, they edge, they weed eat. I don't know if we let them on mowers or not. I don't think we let them on our zero turns. But they do participate in the mowing because they're doing a lot of the heavy labor.
Labor, like, when we refer to contract labor, typically that nomenclature for us is like labor-ready companies that we contract with and we just pay them by the hour and they send us people.
So we are going to do that though?
Yes. Oh, yes, yes, yes. And we are finally getting some. Last year or this time, we couldn't get them. And the market is much better. We're paying more, first of all, and we're actually getting them this year.
So we're going to have some extra help for our staff?
That is, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, Ms. Eads, your question. That is exactly correct. We are able to get contract laborers.
So we're going to have to help our staff?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I misunderstood your question.
We didn't have the help to be able to do it.
Yes, ma'am. Or the contract labor to help.
That's what I'm saying. By help, I mean both, FTE and contract. We couldn't get people last year to do the work. So the people that we did have was FTA's, FTE's, excuse me, were just overwhelmed. And again, it looks like it's so far.
Once again, apologize. I didn't understand the question. Sorry.
We're on the same frame. I just knew in my head, we talked about contracts, like contract help. And I was first in terms of contract companies going out to bid on RFP, but Pat cleared it up with the contract laborers. So, but now we have, that was our biggest point. I think Pat and I both agree. We just want to see the help be there as well as be able to maintain.
Parks are a big deal.
Absolutely, yeah. It's a quality life thing for our citizens.
No, it is. And it's embarrassing if our parks aren't to a standard that we expect. Next one is animal welfare. There's some increases there. You can answer any, but primarily we increased drugs, supplies, cost of feeding animals, the utilities are all an increase. That's why you're seeing such a significant increase year over year. When I say significant, amended budget was 686 last year and 723, but they had some turnover and so anyway, it has been a struggle in the animal welfare business over the past few months.
I want to, sorry, Tim. I want to pitch this and I think Vaughn and I had a brief conversation about this a few weeks ago when the animal welfare ordinances were coming up. And there seems to be a shortage of veterinarians. So one of the things I'd really like to pitch for years in the future is if, looking at possibly hiring our own vet to maybe reduce costs and have someone on hand. But I understand it's not doable this year.
Yeah. And it's very expensive to have a.
And the shelter was built with that plan in mind.
I actually looked at trying to see if we could have our own clinic. Edmund has her own clinic and even share a clinic for our employees, for a doctor. And it's just, I couldn't make the numbers work. Okay. Next is municipal court. Nothing major changes there. Then to night services with Mike Stroh and Terry Craft splitting different responsibilities here. You can see that we added more of Mike Stroh from disaster relief. Back when we were in a large recession, we moved staff out of the general fund and moved them in places we could try to pay for them. Stroh was one of those that we had moved over to 310. 310 is disaster relief. It's really not a revenue source over there. We had put $1 million to seed that. So when we have a disaster, we have money to immediately go out and address the disaster. So we've slowly tried to move some of those people back to where they came from and so we've moved half of Stroh in there, so that makes that number go up some. You look at page 25, the cost of the neighborhood initiative program. You have fairly significant numbers. You have two personnel over there. If you remember, the neighborhood initiative program is the old weed and seed grant. It was funded for, I don't know how many years. And we continued, we continued offering those same services. That was a Department of Justice grant and we continue to do that. And we ran into some issues. It's not funded here, but it's a good place to talk about it. Is the, we have been doing more and more tutoring out of that area. So kids come out of school and they come over there and get tutoring. We have, I don't remember, three or four teachers that we're paying an hourly fee to. They're just on, just like part-time employees, not getting benefits. But it costs us about $35,000 a year to provide that tutoring. That's kind of one of the main focuses they're doing in neighborhood initiative along with the VIDA program. They're handling some of the food pantry commodity program. And what am I missing? They're doing one other.
Some camps as well.
Oh, yeah, we're doing a summer camp. We've done summer camps. But we may just do tutoring this year. I'm not sure the whole summer camp deal, how that's going to work out. So it's a cost. Grants go away and then you got to fund it for real. And that's one of those deals that we've done and stay committed to. And unless there's any other questions?
I've got a couple on this one. So a couple of things. One, I'm not seeing this broken down on page 25 for the neighborhood initiative, neighborhood services for 23, 24, but we had talked about the National Night Out and that we had a number of neighborhoods where basically the $100 from city staff maybe needs to be increased for the degree of attendance for that event. And I'm not sure if that's supposed to be included with the 33 Association Five Events portion. I'm just wondering if there was a bump for the National Night Out event that we talked about or not?
Yeah. You know, I don't know if, I'll have to, let me look at. Let me pull the Old Testament. This is the Old Testament. That's the New Testament. That is 15. I'll have to go back. I need to see if he added to it.
And if you just, I mean, you don't have to do it on the minute. Like, if you just want to add it to the list of questions to be answered for follow-up, Tim, it's fine.
Okay, we'll check into it and see if there was money added into there.
I just was wanting to know because we talked about that for.
Tim, we did talk about it in budget session. I don't.
I don't know the off-the-top minds.
That's fine. Can we just flag it for?
Yeah, I'll make a note of it. We typically, those things that we talk about, we just make sure the department head is zeroed in on making sure that happens. But I'll put it in the notes. Yes.
Okay, we'll look into it.
Yeah. And then I've got two more really quickly. Sorry, Tim. On the Boys and Girls Club for the funding 23, 24, that's still for the $75,000 for one club. And we talked about whether we could be able to provide additional funding to put other clubs in the city.
So there are no other places to put clubs. There's already a club at Telstar that we don't have to pay for. So we have two clubs. And so they're busing students to Telstar and then they're moving students to, I'm trying to remember where.
It's not Country States.
Country States.
See, I had it right in my head and then thought it was wrong. There we go. So we do have the two locations.
And there was no other place to do it.
Okay. That's why I just.
We talked to Dr. Cobb about it and.
I just wanted to ask the question because again, I know.
He's got the latchkey program and he doesn't want them competing against each other.
Well, and councilwoman, or former councilwoman, Bryce Allen's in the audience and, you know, we had multiple conversations, councilwoman being a same thing about, you know.
And that was before Telstar got a club.
Yeah, yeah. So I just, I just wanted to ask that one. The other thing that I want to raise is some of the members on the horse she were aware that I've had some kinds of concerns about some of the direction with regard to neighborhood services, neighborhood initiative type of thing and whether it's really serving the needs that it's set out to serve or not. And I appreciate that you, Tim, and Ryan are working to try to get some metrics and some feedback from the neighborhood associations to see how that's going and so forth. And that, you know, we'll work on that the next year to figure out, like, is this functioning the way it needs to? Is it not? And so forth. So while we were on this one, I just wanted to mention that. Like, I really appreciate those efforts again and that we look at, you know, we do spend a chunk of money with it. It's a good, it has great intentions and we just need to make sure it's serving the intentions because it is, it is a chunk of money for the city.
It is. It's very expensive, just like the neighborhood initiative program for Neighborhoods in Action, I should say.
Which was also funded by Grant at one time and now we fund it completely.
Yeah, this was funded by Grant at one time as well. This is something Charles was near and dear to Charles Johnson as he implemented that program. It is, you're seeing, you know, post-COVID, you're seeing definitely a bigger, an increase in the numbers into those neighborhoods. I saw some stats, so we're working on it now.
Right. No, I appreciate, I just wanted to share that. When you move to technology, IT, I think it's actually, are IT and technology separate? Because I think.
Yes, they're separate. This is, this is the general fund version of IT.
There we go. Sorry.
Yeah. So data monitoring sirens has been moved into here and no change in personnel, but it's an expensive world dealing with information technology. We'll get into technology later, so this is really just the staff more than anything. 10 is emergency response center, dispatch center. Some things to point out here, same staffing. We did move staffing around. You can see under, there's lead dispatcher. So we've reorganized a little bit. Becky Bruce is now the supervisor of the dispatch center. And we're going to have to re-lead personnel. We're not adding any personnel. And this was in last year's budget, but we need to appoint three per shift, three leads per shift. So anyway, that's just, it's just timing on getting that done. Something we also have in here is wages. We have $30,000 in wages, which is a significant amount of money. We did that, one, to save some overtime, but also we had an opportunity. We had some dispatchers retire. They weren't really, I mean, they had the retirement time in, but they went to work for some state agencies. And I mean, these are very well-seasoned dispatchers that really know what they're doing. And we got an opportunity to hire some of them back part-time and so that's what that money's for. The wage money is to supplement openings. So it's a win-win for everyone.
I have one quick question before we move past this one. I have one quick question before we move past this one. And I'm sorry, I'm asking all the questions tonight. On emergency response for the 911 dispatchers, do we have with that an aspect of counseling for like a traumatic situation that's associated? I was reading an article the other day with regard to the incidence of stress and mental health issues for 911 dispatchers because of the type of trauma or traumatic situations they deal with. And I was just wondering, while we're doing funding for that department, is there something built in to where if they deal with, for example, like the shooting that happened at Rose State and like a really traumatic event? I think that PD and FIRE have built in counseling for, am I speaking out of school on this? But, but do we have that for our 911 operators?
Yeah, so Ryan, you want to answer the question?
Yeah, sure, I can. So we do do a couple of different things. We have the EAP program. It's available to all employees and we encourage them.
It's a very robust EAP program.
Very robust. They can even do some of it on their computers, you know, while they're off calls and that kind of thing if they get a real traumatic situation. And the other thing the PD has done that is very appreciative to me is they've included them on the after-action reports and kind of walking through some of that. And that has really helped some of our dispatchers because as you can imagine, they take some of that stuff home.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we try to encourage them to do that as much as possible, to wind down from those events.
Additionally, there was legislation passed this last session where 911 dispatchers are recognized as first responders. So any benefits the fire and police get, the EOC will be receiving as well.
Okay. I appreciate all that. I just wanted to make sure because that was particularly troubling and out of concern for our folks. It's a vital service and so just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you for being concerned about those ladies and gentlemen down there. That is a, it's a tough, tough job.
Absolutely.
Yeah. It is, it is a difficult job and they are very, very professional. Becky Bruce is, she does an outstanding job managing that center.
Absolutely.
A lot of cities have a lot of trouble with getting dispatchers and managing their centers and knock on some real wood, we are very fortunate here. Some great people. Swimming pools, swimming pools is a quality of life issue. We, we, we take in revenue of about 214,000 and it costs us about 368,000 to operate the pool. So there's no expectation that this breaks even because it never will break even, but it's something, you know, we want to provide a nice pool with amenities in our pool. And we'll talk more about the physical side of that, but this is really just the personnel side. There's no, there's no capital in this, in this budget. Gabby Clavus is back another year running the pool. She's training a, she has a succession. As long as she keeps coming back, she'll still be in charge of the pool. So we're happy about that. She's, she's amazing about how she, she is an amazing recruiter of people and she's a trainer. And even next year, whether she comes back or not, she's going to do the training and she'll be training these high school kids that we traditionally get in this program prior to taking, taking the jobs. Next is Communications. Josh Ryan, who is doing a fantastic job. This is where I put in contractual, the community survey, which is about $25,000 to do a community survey. And we talked about that during strategic planning that we'd like to do that. It helps with the quality of life. This was the last one that we did. It's been since 2014, so roughly 10 years. But anyway, that is, that is in this budget. Next budget is Brandon Bundy in Engineering Construction, as we talked about. There's no 2122 numbers there because they didn't exist then. You can see, no, there's no increase in personnel. It's just the cost of personnel, as we've talked about, the cost of livings, the insurance. We did include in here, I guess, one of the reasons we went up for that is there is 134,700 in the upkeep of real property. You can see over on the right-hand column, that's to, for chiller, elevator, lighting and our flagpole all need work done, so or replaced. So that is in this budget. And AutoCAD, PLL, City Works, Esri, all the hardware software is very expensive. It's, it's a kind of a leased software. It's $107,000. So that is why there's such a significant difference from last year to this year. Next is the Senior Center. No significant increases in the Senior Center. Then we're going to replace bathrooms over there. It's a great program. It's very well, very well-attended by our seniors in this community and.
We also have some grant funding coming this year to do some, it'll go with some of this contractual heat and air system and some control systems on the heat and air as well. Thanks to Terry Craft, she was landing, she landed us some grant money to work on the building.
Next is 13, so this is its own fund. This is the funding for this, the gas tax, excise tax, personal vehicle tax. We get roughly revenue of about 592,000. We generally have a lot of works finished here. This is one of those areas where it is. Oops, I must've hit that paper. So this is an area where we, we need new, we need new dollars. This is capital improvement money would go into here. As you see, last year in '22, '23, we spent $584,000. And you can see the type of things that we spent the money on was, was road projects, school zones, traffic studies, replacement bridge bearings on 36th Street, citywide street sign replacement, presidential street repair. And just quite honestly, this year, we need to fix failing streets and failing panels. And so we just put the money, the 500,000 into infrastructure. We will spend all of that and we could spend 10 times that, quite honestly. So we're funding, moving things around just a little bit, just to help this fund to take care of infrastructure instead of just all projects. So under '22, '23, those are all projects. That's not, that's not taking care of a failing, failing asphalt and concrete areas that require repair. The 50,000 for infrastructure other than the building, that is for the Water Department. When they come in, there's water line under the road. It ruins the road. You got to repair the road. That's where this money comes from, to repair the road when you see a big, a big leak of some kind.
And again, we're not planning on, if the sales tax passes, next year, we would still put money.
This money would still be here, five, roughly $600,000.
Plus.
Plus. That's correct. Right now, we're upside down 207. Still have a little over a million, but we got to have places to give matches. When he goes down, he gets $5 million worth of matches. I have to go.
Can you get some to go?
I'm awake. Yeah.
We were, we were able to do some of the things you saw in '23 and have a significant fund balance in this account because of the GEO bond that we were blessed with. The GEO bond took up a lot of the slack that this fund would have been paying to fund in street rehabilitation.
That's a really, really good point. That's a good point where we were able to do all these different, different projects we would not have been able to match here. So, but we're not going to do that next year. Good point, Vaughn. Next is Technology. Talked about IT. This is a technology fund. This money comes from traffic tickets. There's a piece of that that comes into this fund. It's roughly $348,000. We're spending 511,000. It's upside down. We're going to, as you look at the capital outlay, it's expensive, 137,000 for, for, for technology fund infrastructure. Next year, we will not be able to do that. So we try to kind of take that up and down, what we can afford to spend and then still try to maintain some fund balance for a rainy day if something bad happens. The fiber project, some of that was in there. And cybersecurity is a massive issue, as you know, and we will continue to invest in our cybersecurity program.
I have something that I wanted to just comment on on this. I know, looking at the balances, as you said, with regard to technology, but I just want to say thank you and show my appreciation for the outlay that we've done, all the issues that we've had in the last year with issues with email attacks and tampering with systems and the threat of those things. And the note there with regard to the PWA firewall replacement, a combination between those things and the fact that I have somebody 24/7 in my house chirping in my head about cybersecurity and the importance of cybersecurity makes me want to just acknowledge the, the investment that the city is making with regard to technology because it is vital, it is needed. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that and say thank you for doing that.
We're fortunate. We still have Ryan that we rely on sometimes and we have a great department head down there now in Stevenson.
Absolutely.
Has a really good job. Some really talented young men down there as well.
We have our own personal geek squad in city, in city manager's office with Ryan.
Don't say that. Don't say that.
They prefer nerd herd.
I got in trouble for that.
She's not here tonight.
Ryan, it is a term of endearment, sir.
She'll be in my ear.
Okay. Onto the more interesting thing like street lighting. So.
Vaughn Sullivan.
Vaughn Sullivan. I should take Robert Street's name off there. If you look back in '21, '22, that we were paying about $336,000 for street lighting. OG&E came in and did an audit. We should have blocked that audit. So then it went to 672,000. Now we're up to about $780,000 a year to pay OG&E for our street lights around the city. We take in revenue of about $600,000 a year. So right now, we're upside down about $283,375. You know, it's something that's, that is not sustainable. I'm going to have five areas tonight that we're going to need to talk about and this is the first area, something that staff has looked at and we're going to want to talk about at some point through this next fiscal year with you all is we, we see, I mean, we're going to have to have a rate increase to true this thing up. Though we think residential $1.75 is adequate, we, we think commercial, I think we can increase commercial and, and balance this thing. So that's something we're looking at, just letting you know. It's on the, on the radar. And it could be something we do next year, '24, '25. It doesn't necessarily have to be this year.
What's the split between commercial and residential bond?
Let's look on page 35, if the bond is.
I've got 35, but, okay, never mind.
I, I have a follow-up on that. Like I know that we were and have been in the conversion process with OG&E to go to.
LED.
Thank you. The letters just went right out of my head. Sorry. In terms of the cost savings there, like how far are we on that pendulum swing to go all LED? It's just all still on, if they're, if they're broken or if they fail, then they'll replace for LED? Is that where we're still at with it?
I think they do pick some areas too, but.
They have taken some, some entire mile sections and converted them, but not, not, not all of them yet.
All the white-way lighting is almost complete, from my understanding, meaning the four lanes.
Four-lane roads.
I think they're working on residential now.
Okay.
So we're.
We're moving through it.
They're moving through it quickly.
I was just hoping that we would also get some cost savings from that LED conversion.
Keep hoping. Just keep hoping. I don't think.
Yeah, that's like, we're paying a, yeah, we're paying it, we're not paying a bill. We're paying per light.
I gotcha. Never mind. Sorry. There was hope there for a second.
There was hope.
Let's keep, let's keep.
But I, I will say that because mine broke down, I keep one in my backyard and when they replaced it with LED, you can read a book in my backyard in the dead of night. So.
Our bill works just like the bill on the one in your backyard. It's by the fixture by the month.
By fixture, flat rate type of thing. Yeah. It's, it's worth it for the peace of mind, but you can read a, you can read a novel in my backyard in the dead of night.
All right. Next is Fund 16. So this is just real projects. As you go through here, they're mostly grants. You can see 2024, where we're going to basically spend 169,151,000. We have some interest that we, we've earned in some fund balance over time to help keep this balanced, but these are just, these are things like the community, for the tutoring program, this is where the tutoring money I got to pay for, for Neighborhoods, Neighborhoods in Action program, this is where that money came from. They're getting rent from the Community Action Group, rents space from us. I'm taking that money and putting it in to the kids for the tutoring. So it just, you see the operation paintbrush, the Christmas basket supplies. This is where Neighborhoods, like I said, the Neighborhood Services, CDVG, any of that comes through here, but we get that back through a grant.
Tim, I have another question from a resident that was posed on the golf. And this, this page may not be the best place to address it, but I'll just pose it. And please, no offense to the golfers, just putting it out there. The question is, my first and biggest concern is once again in regards to the golf course funding. My first question is why the golf course fund has ballooned from 640,000 in 2021 to over 1.8 million? First verify that those numbers are correct in 2023. What exactly changed about the cost maintenance? Is it just inflation or other?
Let us get to the golf budget and we'll answer all those questions. We'll get there in a little bit.
Respectfully, before we start police and then fire, could we just take a quick five?
I was just fixing to announce, just take that at your leisure and you can move through.
Excellent. Okay, thanks.
As long as we keep four people here, right?
I'm going first, okay?
I'm going second.
Police budget. This is a second year of a two-year contract with the police department. In their budget, it's a 2% cost of living. So there is no negotiations with police this year. They'll be negotiating next year. They're, with the increase in revenue, this is where you see large impacts because so much of the money goes to police and fire, but you can see a revenue of 19 million versus an expenditure of roughly 18,600,000, so about $537,000. That is, that is, that is positive. Rarely do we get positive numbers. We get a positive number here for police and fire. So they transferred over, well, in their contractual account, they did increase their contractual account. As you can look on the next page, page 40, I should say, page 40. No increase in personnel, but they did increase their simulator warranties and the Pharaoh Systems and license plate reader services and some of the P25 radio, some analysis software. So all those come with some expenses that added to their bottom line. And then they were, they moved over $1,577,000 to O21, which is their capital account. And within the capital account, if you go to page 41, you can see in the box to the right below is what they're spending, the $1.5 million in capital on nine Mark Patrol units, two motorcycles, which you try to replace every other year, SIU vehicle. And you can go through radios, body cams, computers, computers for the Pharaoh system, all the different things it takes to run the department and including another, every year, we're putting $75,000 for jail recapitalization as we, we had a study a couple of years ago from Dr. Balu that did that and, and that we needed to recapitalize money to do a major update at some point on the jail. So we're just putting money away for a rainy day for that. And let's see, there's one other. Oh, the police fire training facility. one other, oh, the police fire training facility, they, they put $75,000 in, in that as well for, uh, maintenance of that building.
You know how close we are to having bike hands for each officer?
Not off the top of my head, I really thought all of them do.
I, I, I'm not for certain.
I'm pretty sure that's the case.
I think they're still checking them out.
We'll, 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 we'll find that out for you, Mayor.
We should be pretty close.
I, I think, yeah, most, majority of them on the street and have them now, but that's a good question, and that was such an important update to our police department. Um, I just, I have a question, does the chief think we have enough manpower per shift right now, or has, has there ever been a request for more manpower patrol at this point?
They're in the, may, may, who did the study for police?
Matrix.
Yes.
Matrix.
Matrix. We added police officers a couple of years ago, so no, there's been no request for manning, new manning for the police department. Going to the next twenty-five, even though this is not part of the police, it's played a role with the police department, it's the juvenile program, municipal court, we have, um, this has been funded over time with either money out of the general fund to supplement it or tickets in the juvenile program, to get kids in the program, you have to write tickets to get them into the program, you can't just refer them, so it's kind of a, it, it's been a little bit of a struggle with this program for some time. We have, um, we're in the process of, of hiring a part-time juvenile probation officer. Uh, right now, the city prosecutor manages this, and she does a good job, but it, we want, we want a little bit more involvement, and we are hoping to, we'll see what we hire a, a retired police officer that understands this program would be a really good thing, so that's what we're working on there. It, it's, I think with the right people in place, this program is really sustainable on its own without having to supplement it, but it has enough, and we're gonna give them a year or two to get their feet under the ground and make sure it's doing all the things it needs to, it's, it's a good program, we don't wanna abandon it. Next, and we can go through these quickly, these are, these are, uh, there's no revenue source like Police State Seizures on thirty, this is, this is limited use money, it's from drug busts, we get to keep part of the money, we never know how much it's gonna be, some years you get nothing, some years you get twenty, twenty grand, so we put just some basic things that will help the police department if there is money there to use, sometimes they don't use it, but it is, it has to be used for drug enforcement, it's limited use, it's not, you can use it for anything else. The next one is the Police Special Projects, the thirty-one account, this comes from donations, this is the Shop With A Cop, the K9 program, will get five, five, six, seven thousand dollars a year, and, um, they put a little capital money in there to make sure that, that they have supplies, money and some miscellaneous, but they won't use it unless, um, they have money, and this program, just, the, the chief wants me to make sure everyone understands, the Shop With A Cop is completely funded by donations, the taxpayer is not, are not, um, subsidizing that program, so I pass that along on his behalf. Police lab fees, that's back in the old marijuana law days, that there was some fairly significant, um, revenue for that program, around $10,000 a year, and that there is, um, with the changes in the laws, there's very little revenue in the program, so it's probably something in time, we'll just, we'll spend the money and we may eliminate that fund. Next is forty-seven, back into city operations, these are, these are kinda mixed in here just over time, with the way things develop, but this is Employee Activity Fund, this is the, this is where we have employees from all the departments, not every department participates, but there's a, there's a volunteer program of employees that put on our swim party, our Christmas party, they put on chili cook-offs, we're gonna do foot golf, they, they handle all activities for the employees. We put a little money in here, most of this money has come from donations as well over the years, but we put some transfer in from O-ten and seventy-five, about $10,000 to help subsidize that. Next year, it says Dodgers and Frontier City, I would like to do something for the employees for a little bit bigger project than they've done for the employees, but I don't think we're gonna be able to afford Frontier City, it's very expensive, so we'll, we'll either look at something that we'll put on ourselves, or something at the zoo, or something like that, but it's a really good program, it's a morale builder for the employees, and if you've been to any of our events, like the city Christmas party, it's well done, and it's all volunteer service, there's no overtime paid, those, those employees get out there because they care about their brothers and sister employees that work here, so it's really cool. Next is the jail, O-36, back to the police department, so revenue, this comes in from, from, uh, our county, we, we were doing pretty good with the county fast-track program where you could come in and bond out, but now the county's figured out that they're doing that now, so I don't think we'll see as much money from that, but it was good while it lasted. We get warrants and bonds, and then the other cities in Tinker Air Force Base use our jail, so the surrounding cities use our jail, and, uh, we were charging $65 a day fee for the use of the jail, that's gonna go up to $80 a day, we, we can't lose money on doing this with the other cities. It's still a, a good deal, and it's a great, very well-run jail, this is for misdemeanors, this isn't, this isn't the county charges where people come in here.
And it's one-way back to our residents, um, especially low-level offenders from having to go into need as housing, really serious offenders, so, thank you.
Yep, good point. Thirty-seven, police impound fees, we receive in revenue about 43,000, we're expecting 43,000 this next year for impound fees, this money goes into overtime mostly, and some capital, there's some equipment that will come out of here. Overtime, 12,007,19, and what that overtime goes for specifically is DUI programs, where we stop, do the traffic stops and, and specific enforcement on DUI. And it doesn't take active patrol officers off the street, it has, I don't know what the right word, one of you cops are gonna have to tell me, the special emphasis.
Special emphasis.
Special emphasis, where they're working specifically on that versus having a, a scout car that's on regular patrol. So it's a good program, good use of, of those dollars. All right, next be our fire department, O-40, page fifty. So this, this budget includes a 3% COLA. Um, next year, we have a three-year contract with the fire department, so we, the, the third year of that contract has a 0% cost of living in it. This budget has two additional personnel in it at the request of, of the fire management, that we add an inspector, and we add a training captain, the inspector will be another, um, another, I'm losing the words. Uh, what, another one of our regular, our regular, um, fire, fire office inspectors, and they will have responsibility for, along with the other inspectors, for certain responsibilities to do with, with, um, education, pub ed, public education. It's something that we're tracking and keeping a close eye on as we continue to work with that department. That was, that was a recommendation on the ESI study that we added inspector, they did add a training captain, they, they actually asked for four positions, didn't think they could afford four positions, so I dropped them back to two positions with the training captain, this training captain position is to go with the police fire training facility to do emphasis on not just training for our department, but also working in training and managing training for other departments, this facility will be highly sought after, it is a state-of-the-art training facility, we have a legal ruling from our city attorney that we can create an enterprise fund, we can bring money in from, and a lot of these guys are already working with Eastern Oklahoma County VOTAC, that we can work out contracts to do training at this facility and bring revenue in to help, I wouldn't say pay the full, um, all the money for the training captain, but this doesn't show the revenue that it'll bring in, and they're gonna have to have a very detailed, specific plan before I let them fill that position, but I think it's something that is, um, that is needed for our department and for, to manage that new facility.
If I understand, if I understand correctly, um, and I think you explained it to me, is that some of our firefighters work at East, Eastern Oklahoma County Fire Training Center.
That's correct.
And they're paid to provide training at that location out there. But this proposal will allow them to still work for those people and be paid by them, but they will come do the training at our facility, and that money that the people pay to go to the training will come back to an enterprise fund, is that correct?
That's correct, and that they'll be paid by Eastern Oklahoma County, not by, not by us.
And Pat, our contract, I'm sorry, our contract under this will be with Eastern Oklahoma County, it won't be with our, uh, we could not contract that separately with our own individual firefighters, we have to contract with Eastern Oklahoma County to have them send to us then trainers. Now, those trainers may be Midwest City firefighters, there may be HARA, Choctaw, other firefighters as well, but our contract will be with, with Eastern Oklahoma County to send us, uh, people to, instructors to train, and then, um, we will then, through the use of our police fire training center with other parties other than Midwest City, we will then charge out that service, and that's the money that'll go into the, uh, enterprise fund to, uh, to fund, uh, these programs.
And the, and the charge will be for our facility, correct?
Exactly.
That's right.
Well, it'll be, it'll be, and understand, it'll be for everything for our facility, it'll be, you know, electric, it'll be water, it'll be our personnel, it'll be, in other words, what I, when Doug and I talked about this, uh, the, um, I told him, he needs to itemize, and whoever the, uh, captain is going to be, needs to be able to itemize out all of those expenses and be able to charge those back and demonstrate, uh, a, a char, a system, a process on, on how they're going to charge and how that money will be charged back.
So we're, we're literally renting out the wedding reception hall, is what we're doing.
You got it, you got it.
One of the best analogies I've heard on them.
Yep.
Wait till I get more caffeine, stand by.
This is all papered up, right?
Von's written a legal opinion.
Right, we're, we, we papered it all up, and, uh, yes, we are.
But there'll still be a lot of work.
Well, there's still a lot of work, like, we don't have our fee structure put together, and that's one of the things that, uh, still needs to be done, is to obviously get the facility built, figure out what our expenses are, and be able to charge back those expenses.
And also, when we host a class and we're doing the training ourselves, if we wanna allow other departments to send people, they can come, we'll just charge them a fee.
Right.
It's like they do us now.
And as I explained, we cannot, we cannot be, we're not a for-profit company, and under Oklahoma law, we cannot turn a profit on this, but we can recoup our expenses, and we need to be able to document what each and every one of those expenses are and have a rate structure for, to allow us to recoup, uh, what those expenses are.
And when we, the expenses that we recoup would then go back into the enterprise fund that would help buy more supplies to operate.
Maintenance, maintenance of the facility, purchase supplies, replacement supplies, all of that, uh, i- is factored all into this, yes.
And this is a new endeavor, so I'm, I'm assuming that, you know, we, it's day one, we're, you know, we understand there's gonna be some hiccups, but.
Sure.
It'll be reevaluated at some point, if it shows that it's not working, there's nothing to say.
Then we'll just, we could absorb that position back in here and, and cut a position that someone retires in if we needed to. I think it's, you know, that it is a joint labor management request, and I think, uh, you know, I think it's a, it's a good, a good use of, of dollars to help manage this facility.
And our training needs will take priority over everyone else.
Absolutely.
And can you explain one thing before we get off the fire department, that there's a difference in the pay rate, the pay increases this year?
Right.
And there's a reason for that, can you explain that?
Well, it's because we have a three-year contract with fire, the first year, I think it was 4%? No, what did we?
Well, it was negotiated, right?
Right, all, all three years are negotiated, so we don't have to renegotiate next year.
Okay, it's not that we're treating one different from the other, it's, it was negotiated.
And, and police could've done a three-year contract, they chose not to, um, that's why they did 2%, that was what they agreed to, we offered them three, they didn't want three because they didn't wanna do a third year, so we'll see, we'll see if that, how that works out for them.
And as a result of that, our non-union employees will get a.
3%.
3% raise, okay.
Yes, sir. We made sure I've, that, um, I asked for more money to be put into maintenance of equipment for these aging buildings, I wanna see, um, as you look at, as you look at their O-41 account, remember they transfer money, over $250,000, they put over to, to their capital account, that we have taken care of window replacements in Station One, that we're, we're, we have our five-year apparatus replacement program in place, a new engine right now, costs $850,000, and it takes two years after you make an order to get it, so that's just what we face, it's incredibly.
And we're still on track for $250,000 out of their budget to go into the vehicle replacement from here to eternity, right?
Yep.
And we, as a citizen, we should all appreciate that because that's something that's just been started in the last couple of years, because we were negative on that for a long time.
Yeah, we were borrowing money.
And it took, but now, no, it's gonna happen, they're gonna put that money in there ahead of time.
Right.
Just like we do on some of the building, on the dump trucks.
We did some of the GO bond, we put some money into apparatus and the equipment, and I think the loan, the loan was actually for the building, not, not for apparatus.
That was to get them caught up.
Right.
And replace aging equipment, and then they start.
And radio infrastructure.
Start new.
Similar to what we, what, what Works does with dump trucks, because they don't buy a dump truck one year, it's over a period of a.
It's over a period of years to buy the big pieces of equipment, excavators, bulldozers, dump trucks. And the P25 radio system's in here, it's expensive, but we need to, you know, it's a, it's a big investment, but we have control of it, we maintain it, our own, our own, uh, we have a radio designated person within our Scott Walsh that helps handle the radios, and we're continuing to upgrade that system, and the new P25 is expensive, but it is something that's, that's a, um, and Ryan will come rolling out of there if I get this wrong, but it's an 800 megahertz system, and we wanna make sure that no matter where you're at, you can use a walkie-talkie or a regular radio, so.
How quick are we coming to the fruition of getting that operational?
I think they're waiting on getting access to the wastewater treatment plant, there's that cell tower out there that they need to put an antenna on, we have to have permission to do it, even though we have a lease, we, we get, we don't have to pay anything, we have to get permission, so we're working through that, but we're getting close. Ryan?
Just so you know, we don't, we don't own the tower, we only own the land, so that's why we have to give permission.
Yeah, so ideally, so currently there's one side up on, in Midwest City, and we own another side, that's at the Channel Four Tower, which is actually in Edmund, uh, but to get better coverage, the in-building coverage, handheld coverage that Tim's talking about, we want to have at least two tower sites in Midwest City, um, fire would actually prefer three, so the second tower site that's currently coming online is at the Water Resource Recovery Facility out off of Thirty-Sixth Street. Once we get that tire, site live, we're gonna proceed with the clock tower site, and that's obviously right underneath, uh, or right at, uh, WP Bill Atkinson Park. So time-wise, we're finally making progress with T-Mobile, they've been on high center for quite some time, um, but we hope to have access to the tower very soon. I'm not giving you the exact date because I don't have an exact date, but where we were on high center, now we've, we've made some progress, so we're, we're hoping to proceed quickly on that.
And we own the clock tower, right?
We own the clock tower, we don't have to ask anybody, we can put our stuff on there as long as the FCC approves.
Thank you.
If you'd like some extra money, you can get on a rope and go paint it for us right now. now. We're trying to get paint bids. It's incredibly expensive.
You're looking the wrong person to do that.
Paint the curb. Are we, with the expansion, since we're talking about radio systems, with the expansion of Midwest City, a lot of it being east?
Yeah, so the, what, the current site that's live now is the water plant, and the water plant is the highest site in Eastern Oklahoma County, and we have excellent coverage from that site. In the event that we need to, Vaughn is working on a, a new tower out east. We're gonna make sure we have the ability to mount equipment there. We do have a low spot in that area.
Water tower, by the way. Water tower.
I'm sorry, yes, water tower. We do have some AMI, automatic metering equipment, that gets some hit or miss signals from that area, so they're already gonna put a halo up there for us to mount antennas to. So if needed, we will have other infrastructure there. We'll come back and ask for money, though, for sure.
Yeah, we can't have hit or miss on the radio.
Definitely not. Definitely not.
800 megahertz, right?
It's actually 700, but I wasn't...
Out there you go. I knew it.
He was slow coming out, though.
He was slow coming out. I expected it to be quicker. He's, he's got some of the pudding up there, whatever that was, the Oreo cookie. Remember, on break, there's, there's food up there.
That pudding is the...
That pudding is really good, and there's a mountain of it. You can feed everyone who wants it here. Okay, any other questions on FIRE? That's pretty much a good overview. All right, Welcome Center, 45. This is, this is 30% of the hotel motel tax comes into this account. We used to have a Welcome Center until the state of Oklahoma decided they wanted it.
COVID decided?
Yeah, I guess COVID decided, but it's okay. So, so the money is roughly $176,000 revenue. We have expenditures of 152. This money's been used for some of the, some of the street people. Street people, that didn't sound right. That's not what I meant to say. For the street department personnel. This may be a long night. Street department personnel, the community engagement manager. So, we use some park-wide area mowers, year three to three. Once again, it's a $150,000 mower. So, it's a place to be able to provide the maintenance of the area. We still have to maintain it over there where the Welcome Center's at. It's just not the building. They have a lease on the building. We, we own the building. It's just they have a 50-year lease, and we're in like year 25. So, we really are hoping they wouldn't have taken that, because it's right across from Town Center. Obviously, it was a prime spot for other uses, but they're, they're doing, they're doing a nice job with it. Next, 46 is the Convention Visitors Bureau. This is, once again, this is 56, 56% of the distribution of the hotel motel tax, and this is the Convention Visitors Bureau, which is Susan McCory and her work, and some economic development, Josh Ryan and Robert Coleman. So, the CVB, about $71,000. Conference and city funds, we continue to put around $20,000 a year in conference and city funds. Susan is, uses that to help us attract large conferences. So she works with other hotels and the Reed Center and the Delta of attracting, hopefully groups that fill up all our hotels and that we might provide some incentive. It's usually not more than 2, 3,000. We usually do it in like transportation. They're gonna be transported from Rose State back and forth. They're transported between the hotels, or they're going on an event. So we try to make it where we're getting actual, you know, we, we know specifically what it's going to. It's not just handing cash out to people. It's not how it works. And then it's part of our Tourism Visitors Guide fulfillment program. Next page is advertising permission around the state for, for our facilities and for our, our region. Economic Development pays about .8, so quite a bit of Robert Coleman's salary comes out of here. This is also where we put in $36,000 a year for the Tinker and the Primes contract with the Chamber. And that's really all there is to that one. Next one's capital drainage. So, yeah, capital drainage. This is, this is, right now, we charge, we charge a dollar, a dollar 35 citizen, a dollar 35 per customer. Not per citizen, per customer, utility customer for capital drainage. This is, this is why we need a sales tax. I mean, this is, this is all we get for capital drainage. We have millions and millions, tens of millions and tens of millions of dollars in drainage that, especially when you get five inches of rain, we get a lot of calls. I mean, there's a lot of, I, I'm not telling the council anything. I'm really just on public, going on public record or talking about how much we need for capital improvements for drainage just in of itself. We have basically 3.2 personnel for this entire city to maintain all these drainage channels and these improvements. They're not being maintained like they need to. These guys work over with the street department. They spend time working in the street department. They're, they're really not full-time in capital drainage. They do as much as they can. We need, we need more staffing in this area. We may even really need a civil engineer to help us. Most of the cities with really good capital drainage programs have a civil engineer that helps, helps manage drainage improvements. We did, last year, we did a test. You can see that there's only $50,000 in that account. Last year, we, we did, took the orchard on as an internal project. Just out of this, we spent 140,000, 49,000. I don't know how much more you spent, Vaughn, than that, but probably 30, 40,000 from other funds to take on a project. We internally did the entire project. It is an awesome project. It was not an easy project, but we have not had any complaints from that area. Knock on wood. I agree. It's war two. To, to do just the Stormwater Master Plan, which is not in here because there's no money in here. There's $50,000 when we get done with this account, and we're not, we're not hardly spending any money other than on the personnel out of this account and, and just to have some things for Paul Streets to use to fix a few projects that, that are not expensive. But the Stormwater Master Plan is $500,000. It's a half million dollars.
Tim, I just want to put this on the table, and I know we've had a few conversations about this. Once again, our county collects ad valorem taxes, which is property taxes. I'm still curious to know, particularly because so many portions of the city of Midwest City at one point belong to the county. We have a lot of aging infrastructure. When the ARPA funds were coming through the second round, I had hoped that there would be some flexibility within those funds for municipalities within this county to reach out, to get some support for some of these existing projects. But I would really like to encourage, you know, some conversations with the county commissioners of where in their budget they have any flexibility to support municipalities like ours that are struggling with these aging infrastructure that have...
They're, they're mostly working with the little bitty cities. Vaughn, go ahead.
The counties are also limited by state statute. They, they can only provide labor for us because of our size. You have to be under a certain population, or state statute will let them do certain things within our city. They, they try to do what they can do. We're working with them right now currently to repave Jim White Drive, which goes to the Police Fire Training Facility. We're participating by buying the materials. They're gonna supply the labor.
Which we appreciate.
We appreciate that, and Carrie's done a great job. Mr. Blumer has done a great job of working with us and her staff, but their, their hands are pretty tied by state statute.
Thank you for clarifying.
It is a good point, though. I mean, it's, we, we inherit, when we took in those areas into our city, oh my gosh, yeah. That's about all I can say about that. Okay, 61 is stormwater, so the 500,000 I was just talking about, I hit it to this fund. Stormwater is on my list of five. Stormwater's not had any rate increases since 2008, so they have, they have been barely breaking even over time, trying to keep them in a fund balance. We froze a position over there this, this last year to try to keep them, their revenue's 821, their expenditure's 867, so they lost 30, 40,000 out of fund balance. But this is really kind of where, where the drainage study probably should come from. I don't know, we, we can split it in a couple places, but, but just to show kind of where, where we're at with this fund, the house, we have household hazardous waste over there. We've talked about some options to move that to sanitation. We've limited the hours, though I don't think we've reduced any services. We've just limited the hours to make sure these personnel are out in the field doing what their primary job is.
And if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Vaughn, the storm management study would be contracted out.
Yes.
But it's our hope that the sale, the plan with the sales taxes, we're gonna potentially hire people, full-time employees that are capable of doing what they did at the orchard, because it's a lot cheaper to do it like that than it is to contract it out. Is that correct?
That is correct. That would be my, my, I don't know what the word is, my
Wish.
Wish, my strategic plan. I don't want to reuse that word, but is to, to put some personnel in here that, not in this budget, but the budget prior to this, that is gonna be taking projects on, as many of these projects that we physically can take on, plus we need to make, we have hundreds of, of drainage complaints in this city, and we have them all documented for everyone to know. They're on a list. When you call in and you have a drainage complaint, if it's not something we can fix easily, it goes on this master list. This drainage study will help prioritize where these, where the things that need to be first. I mean, that, it's the fairest way of, of doing this. We've tried to do this with the road projects where we have a ranking system, a statistically valid system.
And for those on the council that didn't get the opportunity to walk the orchard prior to the falls, I mean, prior to it being fixed, those people over there had, it, it was like a river in their yards, and it was a result of our
Up against their...
Up against their foundation.
Yeah.
And it was, and it was coming off of several different pieces of property, and it was a result of our employees going out there. Because I, I was out there with them when we first walked it, and they came up with, I think Johnson and Associates was involved in it, and they came up with a plan. I said, I'm not gonna hate to say this, but this rainy season, I have not got one picture from those people. And trust me, they had my phone number to send me pictures, and it was, it was pretty bad. But we showed with the staff that we had, we could do it a lot cheaper than what a contractor was gonna charge.
Yeah, 180 grand for that project. You contract that out, it would've been
Million dollars.
It would've been a lot.
And correct me if I'm wrong, stormwater is an unfunded mandate by the feds that we get zero funding for, correct?
That is correct.
Stormwater quality is a, not, yes, you are correct, Mayor.
Now, what, as we look at this, and this is, you know, right now, there's still $500,000 left in that fund balance if we did the drainage study completely out of here. But I think as staff looked at this, we worked with the, with Sarah Hancock's office and with Public Works and, and with our city manager's office. I think from, from stormwater, there's some, there's some, some fundamental issues with the way this has been done in this city. We are charging a very tiny fee to commercial businesses for stormwater runoff. So what we're really looking at, I, I, I don't think we have any intent in increasing stormwater fees to the citizens. Where we're missing it is the impervious, impervious surface. So you have these huge parking areas. I'm not picking on anybody, but we have these massy parking areas. That's where there's runoff. I mean, there, there is nothing to absorb that water, and they're paying the same amount as you would at your house.
Well, plus two, they're also
Is that correct?
And plus two, they are mandated, as a result of the federal regulations, to monitor and inspect all the grease traps in all the restaurants and, and in commercial facilities that have food trapped in mine.
Yeah, the fog, it's a fog called a fog ordinance, fats, oils, and grease. But we're doing that actually through wastewater.
Yeah, line maintenance is managing that programs.
Okay. But it could, some cities, it does fall in. Some, some of them do this. So, just giving you guys, I mean, we're okay with this year, but I mean, as we have, this is an engineering task to do this, an impervious surface study, so that will, that will be happening this year. Next is the 065 street tax. This is 2012 ordinance that we're getting...
Not, not very accurately named, by the way, in my opinion.
No. It's not very accurately named. Really, the, the, it's split 25%. They roughly get revenue of 500,000. It's split 25% in between street, parks, trellis, sidewalks, public transportation, and miscellaneous. So as you look on page 63, 24, we kind of go every other year on how much money we take out of here. If you look at page 63, you look at the, the cop, the big box, this is 22, 23, look at all the, the one and a half million dollars worth of improvements to streets and parks and matches and everything else that goes in there. And this year, we're doing $235,000 because we can't, I mean, we need to continue to take one year and build back the next year to, to accurately manage these areas. And this, for example, the pool liner, the pool liner, we're in year three of funding the pool liner. We actually thought we were gonna have to do it in four years or five years. Just went ahead and put the money in there this year because the liner's getting old. It's got problems. It needs replaced. It can't wait two or three more years. So, that's why you see such a big number for the pool liner.
It's a very heavy mill thickness vinyl.
Yeah.
It's similar to a liner of a residential pool, but much more robust. And one of the things that shortens, just FYI, one of the things that shortens the life of a liner in our big pool versus a pool in your backyard is, we don't cover ours, and it drain, we drain it, and it sits there all winter in the sun and the weather.
You can see the, also coming out of this count is our embark transit. We go to two different places, and our bus, cleaning our bus stop shelters from the group home does that. It's a contract with them, and the embark also funded in 09, 014 is, is, so there's 75,000 here and another roughly 75,000 there. It's not really expensive, but it's, you know, the cost of buses and managing that system is expensive.
Since Sarah stepped out, I noticed on the improvements on this one, it's the resurfacing Westminster. Is that?
Yeah. Where's, Vaughn, that's north of Reno, though, isn't it?
Yes, that is the second half of the mile from Reno to 10th. We stopped with the bond money. That, we're, it's a weird mile, Mr. Burn, that when you get past Windmill Farms, we start splitting down the center line with Choctaw. So with bond money, we stopped half, half, halfway through the mile until we could get Choctaw's cooperation. We now have that, and we're just working on getting it cooperated with the service.
But no help from the county?
No, sir. No help from the county. Now, that would be a situation where if they could help us or Choctaw, we're both too big, but when they split down the center, the center line, sometimes that, years ago, the county would step in and take care of situations like that, but they're prohibited now.
Yeah, they used to get to do that. That was good for us, because we have a lot of that.
I have two related questions, but I'm not sure if those are the appropriate ones to address, but I think it is. One of them is on completing the dedicated bike lane down ADR. I had a question about that this weekend from a citizen.
Sorry, we're laughing. It's just, have you seen that paint, painting, I think?
Go ahead, Mayor.
I don't know what's going on.
What'd you, what'd you say? What'd you say, Mayor? What'd you tell me you thought it was?
I thought somebody was drunk driving that line truck to test to see if we're paying attention.
Right down there.
No, I'm sorry. You, I jumped the gun on your question. I thought maybe you were gonna talk about the quality of the paint job.
No, I have not seen it.
Try to buy it in the daylight.
Okay. No, I
You want a good giggle? Go look, go look at it.
Okay. No. I thought that was just a, like a, we're getting ready to close the flame thing. I thought that was just a, like, uh, we're getting ready to close the lane thing, that's what they really did to us? I have exactly what you're talking about. Okay. Okay, so I didn't find that funny, I just thought that was the like, like, you know, like a notice instead of putting a sign up that says this is getting ready to be a dedicated bike lane, like, a wavy line was going to tell us, like, you know, like, you're going to not be able to drive on this one.
That's what it is, but it was so
That was a test to see if we got out of the city.
And looked around.
They wanted to see if we would notice it.
It was
Okay.
City-sponsored malicious mischief.
Okay, so, um, just like showing up for meetings, too, is this like a new thing? And anyways, um, okay, so, seriously, though, in all earnest, I had a citizen ask me these two questions this weekend. One of them was about that dedicated bike lane on ADR, and when it's officially going to be set out as dedicated, and so, um, and
Coming to a street near you soon.
Okay.
That's all I can
We're working on it.
We're working on it. Engineering is being done right now.
Okay. I'm just going to take that at face value and shut up on that one. And then, the second question that I was asked by the same citizen was about covered bicycle parking, um, for folks who are biking, um, and having, we have like some, some bus stop shelters listed for, um, bus riders is the only verbiage that I have in my head, sorry, but, um, we have those listed under this, uh, page sixty-three, Fund sixty-five. And, so I don't know if that's, that would be an appropriate expenditure, or if we've ever gotten any consideration to doing some covered, um, spaces, like, so that when bikers go into, um, retail stores, um, for example, like, in like a center of a shopping district or one of the groceries or something like that, that there's some covered parking for bikes, because also apparently, um, I got a tutorial in this, I wasn't really cognizant of this, but like with the heat, in the summer heat, the same as, you know, you can't walk with it on your bare feet, you can't walk your pets, because the asphalt temperature gets so hot, the asphalt temperature combined with the sun coming right down causes the bicycle tires to, uh, blow, um, so, I, I was asked the question.
We'll, we'll put that on the list. Next time I talk to Rob Collet, I'll see, you know, I mean, the east coast, we're, see, we're, if they're doing stuff like that, if there's something, something out there like that.
So, and the citizen was sure to mention, like, not asking for a voluminous amount, but just, you know, some quality, like a covered situation in a few different locations.
The only place we could do that, I mean, it would be Sooner Town Center, unless it's on public property, we can't build it on private, but it'd have to be in the usement.
Right, we could do it on Sooner Rose, though, too, correct?
Yes, we could do it at Sooner Rose, we could do it at Sooner Town Center. We'll look into it.
I'm just throwing it out there, because I was asked the question, so.
Well, in the same line, I'm glad to see that we're still online to replace, uh, or put in a covered bus stop here.
Yeah.
Terry Craft started that several years ago, and it's been beneficial to our bus
It has, it's been really nice for the bus riders, no doubt about it.
Right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern to determine what's, what's going to change and what's going to remain the same on our bus routes.
Yeah, we're going to
They're wanting to make some serious modifications, and we're, we are pushing back.
Embark is wanting there's change where there's less than one per day rider, they don't want to stop at those places, but when they rechange the, the trails, it always seem, or the, or the path, whatever, the, the bus route, the route, that, it always seems to be more expensive for us, so, I've kind of pushed back on that a little bit, so, it is, there are some issues, Vaughn's right, there's some issues out there. So we've kind of waited to see, make sure we know where all the stops are going to be before, especially on the northern side, Sarah's not here, but on the northern side is there's some really low riderships, and they don't really want to run that route like they have in the past, so.
They did a study, and it's on their website.
Yeah, it is on their website, you can see where the low ridership's at on that.
They did the study.
I can see you see more and more ridership along this one, whatever this route's called out here. Also, just, you know, we're, we're spending fi, we're, we have revenue of five eighty-four and three thirty expenditures, I also wanted to kind of maintain a little bit of flexibility there, because we're taking on all these new parks, and I don't know what things we're going to need, so this is a place we can go for parks. Okay, seventy, emergency operations. Talked about nine-one-one, this is money that comes in from sales and use tax and from, um, ACOG primarily, about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars in revenue for cell phone taxes to fund the nine-one-one dispatch, and obviously, they're still working on the, what do you call it, map, the
Well, uh, next-gen nine-one-one. The, uh, experimental phase is complete, the, uh, the system's operational, and they're starting to roll out, uh, very quickly, three cities, El Reno, Mustang, I can't remember what other one, but, uh, yeah, that's coming online, that's, that's saving our taxpayers nine, about nine hundred thousand dollars in, in equipment and, and license fees when they roll that out, and it's going to be a GIS-centric system, which they can pinpoint you within like three feet, uh, when you call in nine-one-one, so, uh, it's been a long, arguable process, but ACOG's finally, uh, with their, with their partners, finally pulling that out, and it's, it's going to be a, quite a system, and we're one of the few communities in the United, in the southern region that is actually going to have this on board, so, it's going to be a big deal.
Yep. Storm sirens are also in here, we, um, we're funding the maintenance of the storm sirens, half of it here and half in the disaster relief fund, so fifty thousand dollars are, is in this fund. And you can see the capital, what it goes for, it's headsets and Z-tron modules, and the next log is the radio logs that collect all the calls and various software upgrades. All right. The orange slip, just for the record, I had in here, we are at the halfway point, so, I don't know if you want to, do you need a break? Or you want me to keep going? I'm good, so.
How's everybody? Everybody hanging?
All right.
Press on.
Yes, sir.
No. We're good.
Well, go get it, then.
Oh, okay.
Just saying. Bring it, bring it down and put it on that table, and bring some plates, and anybody that, anybody that wants pudding and can come up here and get it. Anybody that's
I was just joking.
I do have a question. Was it the first time once we hit the halfway mark that you were going to order us the underground coffee, for the good coffee?
That was what Dawn said, I heard.
I thought that, did you hear that? I thought that
From one attorney to another? He would go upstairs.
I heard the city manager commit to that.
Remember, the time we had a problem with this, with the bad coffee?
Right, and the city manager said he was going to go get the good coffee.
Right.
City manager drinks Diet Coke, so, there's the coffee machine right up the stairs.
But he was going to cover it, then he was going to have the mayor pick it up.
Hey, I'm a servant of the people.
All right, seventy-five is our Public Works Administration, as I said earlier, that this is one of our air service funds, so this fund was done back in January, so normally, this should be exact revenue and exact expenditure, because what it costs to run Public Works, which is, you can see the personnel on the next page, sixty-seven, PWA Director, Assistant Public Works Engineer, Chief Construction Office Manager, Secretary, City Work Specialist, Safety Coordinator, even Vaughn's in here, Assistant City Manager, Communications Mark, there's a lot that goes into running the Public Works Department. This is a, a piece of, of, um, that pays for a little bit of everyone that does things for this, so, also, there's some money in here, they have slowly but surely been, been putting money back to do an upgrade to their facility, it's an, it's an old building, and it's, it's pretty original over there, so we've been letting them slowly but surely build that out. The reason it's over, the fiber decline came in, the need for that, or the cost came in after we did this budget in January, so it's, it's upside down fifty thousand, fifty-five thousand because of that. Next inter-service fund is Fleet, Fleet Services, has my name on it, but that's kind of a joke, really, it's Craig, Craig Davis, as you all know, runs that department and runs it very well. This just, some, sometimes there's confusion about this account, and there used to be a lot of, even confusion amongst the department heads about how this, this fund works, but we historically go through and establish expenditures based on the fuel, the parts, and the labor to maintain the fleet for each one of these departments. We keep all that data through a fleet management software program, so we know exactly how much money's been spent on every seat, single vehicle that, that runs on the roads of this city. And then I look at the fuel and try to prognosticate what's fuel going to do for the next twelve months, and, and then add a hundred thousand on top of that, just to be safe. So then that money's divided into all the different departments, and it's done, once again, in January, so that TUT can put this in all these operating departments, so they know what that money's going to be, or what it's budgeted for. Now, if that department has not used that money, they're billed monthly, okay? So we true up this thing every month with tickets, and your fuel card tells us how much fuel you used, I mean, we have, this is a really very scientific way of, of managing Fleet Services with Craig, and, um, if you don't use, if you don't use your allocation, that's, it stays in your budget, we don't move that money till it, till it's actually billed out every month. So if you get to the end of the year, and you didn't use all your money, well, it goes into your fund balance. If you overuse your money, you're going to get a bill, so. One of the things that, that I'm really kind of proud of this year, it's something new, and, and, uh, I really wish that I thought of this a long time ago, because this was not my idea, it's really kind of came from Sid Porter and his people, is, a lot of people have, especially in the police department, they have vehicles they take home, right? And, and they take good care of these vehicles, it's really, it keeps the miles off the vehicles, it's a really good program, long as we can continue to afford to recapitalize these vehicles, and, and so on their days off, they'll come in and get an oil change, and what they hate is they come in and they got to drop their vehicle off, and it might take two or three days. It's the same for a code officer or anybody else, they got to come drop their vehicle, they got to come drop their vehicle off and, and leave it, and so, there's a lot of vehicles that are new vehicles, that all they really need is oil change, they don't need their tires messed with, they don't need the brakes messed with, they don't have anything wrong with them, and so what we're going to do is we're adding a part-time employee, this is a trial, we'll run it from like nine in the morning till three in the afternoon, something like that, and, and they'll be able to call in and get an appointment, and you can come in and get an appointment, and our goal is to have you in and out in thirty minutes, this is no five-minute quick oil lube, I don't think that really exists anyway, but anyway, it's a rapid oil change program, it'll be something, something new, but I think it'll be a, a good service. Mayor, you've been in this position, so.
Have we ever, you know, there's always a lot of consternation about, about fleet maintenance and the peanut butter spread that we use across the board, and, but have we ever done a cost-benefit analysis as to what it would cost us, the current cost of us keeping all of this in-house, which I would prefer, as opposed to contracting it out?
It's been a while, I don't, Vaughn's not here, I don't know if he, I think he had Fleet for a while, I think Dave Belloo had it for most of the time, because Dave came up with this budget process, but, um
I mean, not
Yeah, they have done that, and it was like, it's like
It might be something beneficial, uh, to take a snapshot, because there's always, you know, and, and I bring up the rapid oil change thing as a, you know, I think Oklahoma City contracts a lot of that out, and they can go into several different places and get their oil changed, but is it cost-beneficial, especially to a city our size, and, and any time you contract something out, you, you lose control over that process, so, I just throw that out there.
Now, we've done that over time, we did it with the, um, we used to have our own, our own parts store internally, and we went, we farmed that parts store out to O'Reilly's, which will continue.
Well, that's been beneficial
That was beneficial.
For us.
Because we got, got it down to one person, there was like two or three people in there at one time.
I, I
But for Fleet, we, they did that a long time ago, there was no comparison, I know Norman's done it, and it, there was not, it was so much more expensive, but you're right, it's, it's difficult, because these guys are certified, one, we hire mostly master mechanics, and we pay them to get certifications, and they're certified in like fire trucks, there's a guy over there that does fire trucks, he's a certified emergency vehicle person, whatever that title is, not just a master mechanic, and so these guys work on weed eaters one day, some of them work on weed eaters one day.
Fifteen hundred pieces of equipment.
Yeah, and where they're working on a tractor, or they're working on a sanitation truck.
It's just something to think about.
Yeah.
You know, it's just one of those piece of data you can throw at somebody and say, this is what we're saving the city.
And we continue, last year was the primary fund, I haven't had to add really anything to that, but we're going to continue, we need to work on a, a bay that is just for CNG, because a CNG vehicle cannot be, you can't, maybe you can change the oil, I don't even know that, but if you do any real work on a CNG vehicle, it has to be in a bomb-proof stall, the lights can't spark, the, the motor that drives the, the garage door has to be specialized, so all that has to go in to building a place to work on a CNG truck, so we
I do have one quick question. In the description of Capitol Outlay, it says car wash heater, what's a car wash heater?
So we have a, we have a big car wash over there, and it's not heated or cooled, and so it freezes up, so you know those heaters that fit up in the corner of the building that are fire up that are operated, it's one of those.
I was envisioning something more like
And they use that thing all the time when they get done with a
I, I was thinking like a hot tub for your car type of thing, like where your car just like, and I was like, okay, is that open to city employees? Because I want to see a car go into that. Yeah, like it gets a little nice warm hot tub visit in the middle of winter. Right, I was just, thank you, sorry.
The only other question is the one that you didn't ask, but I thought you should ask that one.
Okay, surplus properties next, that's, all the departments in the city participate a little bit in that, it's, it is a half-person, there's no half-person, but it's half the cost of a person. That runs our eBay store, I think we've talked about this before, we, um, used to just have this massive surplus auction once a year, and we actually lost money on it, and so we, I don't know whose idea this was to go to eBay, once again, I wish I could take credit, but I can't. Craig's idea, so now we sell, sell all this old vehicles, old equipment, stuff we've seized in the police department that's been released, all kinds of stuff we sell, I mean, the city has an eBay store, go look at it, there's, it'll, there's all kinds of stuff there, and we make money, because we have very little overhead, and then that money goes into another fund that is attributed to each department, whoever sold their stuff, their old vehicles, whatever, that money goes in there, whatever, to sell that vehicle, and they can use that for capital, like if they need something that happened to break that they know is going to break, they can go to that fund and get some money. But I pretty much have my thumb on that, I have to approve it before it comes through there, because I don't, it's, it is, um, it's pretty discretionary in nature. What are you saying over there, Sarah H? You want to speak into the mic?
Turn your mic on, Sarah.
I know TUT would find that pudding. Okay, next is one fifteen, recreation, so, if you look on, really, page seventy-three to understand this, this is a, this is one of the most favorite accounts that the finance department gets to manage, because this is where all your revenue comes in for baseball and softball and pavilions and park facilities, rentals, and, and grants and runs and holiday lights comes in here, and then we have to budget that back out, so, we have four hundred and thirty-one thousand revenue, three forty-four expenditures, but it is all very divided, and some of these make more money than others, but these are kind of like little enterprise funds for all these areas that, um, that we operate through the city.
How do we generate, I guess it's revenue, never mind, it's on the dog park, I thought it was generated revenue, but it's expenses.
Yeah, it's expenses, it's where we pay for, pay for upkeep of the dog park. It's where we pay for upkeep of the dog park.
I have one question on this one, and I probably should have been under parks. But we'd had a recent conversation about putting cameras in the parks because of damage destruction in the parks.
Yep.
Is that being compensated for, for the additional, like Mid-America is going to come online soon? Like are we, is that in this budget and I didn't?
Mid-America wouldn't be, but, because that's part of the GO bond and grant money. But WP Bill Atkinson, the pavilions.
Rotary Pavilion, we funded some of the, some of the cameras out of this fund.
Okay.
With revenue from Pavilion rentals.
And we're cameraing up WP Bill Atkinson already.
Okay, but I'm confused because Mid-America was the GO bond project also, and so was WP, so.
Yeah.
But is.
I don't know if that's in, where that's at in that budget, but it is something we're going to have to camera up.
Right, absolutely.
Whether it's out of here, out of there, or out of somewhere else, we're going to have to camera that out.
I just wanted to ask if we had it, if not, if we could add it.
We're going to let Sarah monitor the cameras there.
We're going to give Sarah.
Sarah went to Never Never Land for a minute.
Go back and watch the video, Sarah, I got you just directly.
No, just stay tuned up, we've got three more projects I think we could assign to you. Like you wouldn't even see it coming, it'll be fine, don't worry about it.
Each council person can take a night, an evening and watch the cameras.
Hey, I already signed up to mow on Saturdays. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm not looking forward to operating that John Deere, like.
They weren't going to let you drive it, nor would they wanted me to drive it. I'm more of a Massey guy, though.
Actually, they asked me if I wanted to throw in an application. I don't think they actually wanted to test me first about that.
Okay, 123, Parks and Recreation. This is once again, 14 now percent of the distribution of the hotel. It was by ordinance when that vote took place, distributed this money in various places based on need at the time. So this is some money that goes in Parks and Rec. Revenue about $667,000, expenditures are 649, we have a little bit of fund balance there. You look over in the right-hand column on 76, you see $120,000, utilities and communications. We're paying for lights in the parks with that and the trails. That's O G and E, by the way, that's not on the street light fee because that's a street light. This is when people think about the lights in these parks, we got to pay for those too. That's where this is coming out of. Fiber, once again, Parks and Rec needs the fiber to help, one thing, manage camera systems, for example. But also, this is where we have special events for, that occur in the parks. And you can see special events for 23, 24, same events that were in 22, 23. And we have, let's see what else here. Look on page 78, you see what our, what last year in 22, 23, we, a lot of money went into trails and just upkeep of the parks. And this year, what we wanted to focus on is the Spirit Playground. That's the playground that, I don't know what year, I hadn't been here long and we all went over and as if we built the playground at Regional Park. Which is a little bit scary that you had me out there building a playground, but anyway. So. What year was it?
2001, summer 2001.
Okay, all right. So we have been funding, we have been funding each year. It wasn't a hundred thousand, I don't know how much it was, but this is, this says third year of funding five. And I think this hundred thousand with what we've done in the prior two years should be enough for us to replace that playground, or we're hoping it will. If not, then we won't replace it, we'll have to come back for more money. But we're trying to move quicker because that playground, 2001, that's got some age on it and it's time to replace it. Plus, we need to bring it up to ADA standards too. So I took kind of, took some liberties on that one just to let you know and didn't do as many trails and stuff and try to put some money there based on need. Once again, that would be nice. I know I beat this drum all night long, but the sales tax, that 20%, that would help us in that playground as well. Okay, next is 141, Grants Management. We have an unbelievably gifted and talented grants manager, Terry Craft. She's been here a long time, longer than Vaughn and I, I think, and she does a fantastic job. These are pass-through dollars, CDBG programs. You look to the next page, you can see some of the grants she gets from last year, the capital grants. And this year, we are looking at, we don't always know on this, this, we don't, we're not always able to tell you what the capital is going to be because we don't know what money we're going to get. It kind of comes in throughout the year. So, but you look at just some, some.
Did we get the pickleball money for the park?
Yeah, we do, we did get, she got a pickleball grant. We're going to get two, two.
Courts. CDVG grant money, we got grant money for it.
Yes, we did. I think it included lighting too.
This is, this year's lighting was 22, 23 is the courts and this year's is.
Is the lighting for it.
But you're not here, we're going to do that as a council and mayoral activity.
Give it a watch.
I am ready.
Swing through the fences.
I played pickleball for the first time last year.
It's fun.
That's a huge deal.
It's like a new start tennis.
It is pickle with a paddle.
It was a blast. It was a blast.
You know what it is, don't you, Matt?
It's scaled down racquetball, isn't it?
Scaled down tennis.
No, it's scaled down tennis.
Tennis for all the time. So what you're saying.
It's very. RP, RH, because you don't have a lot as far.
Hey, the last cruise ship I was on had four pickleball courts on the cruise ship. And they were hard to get on.
And there's professional pickleball players now.
I'm sure there is.
All right, I'm going to lose total control of this meeting. Okay, moving forward, I think it's important to note some of these grant activities that Terry does, just the Fair Housing Services and, I mean, we're, we have worked with Leah's Hope and Transitional Housing. We have some houses, we have five properties that we manage with Transitional Housing.
And to give Terry credit, she did put in a very detailed grant for ARPA money.
She certainly did.
For the county, for the hospital.
Yep, incredible, credible application.
Didn't.
We don't know.
Got no, or we have.
We don't know, we don't know. What are they doing?
The money's been reserved on hold with the hopes of maybe building a mental health facility in the jail or attached to the jail. But if the US Treasury does not approve that, that money may be available again, so we'll just keep monitoring.
So have they spent the rest of it that was discretionary, that they were going to hand out to the?
Much all of it was taken for that. There may have been, what, seven, nine million left, I think. I don't know where, what the status of that is.
Where's that at? We haven't heard anything.
Yeah, I haven't either.
So another program I really, I really like that Terry does is the Home Grant Program. There's, for people, for first-time home buyers, they can apply and they can get $7,500 per applicant towards their down payment or closing costs for a house purchased in Midwest City. We normally, we usually spend that money, it's 240,000. We usually spend that money in six months, we'll spend it all. And we have not come close to spending that money this year. It's kind of sad, kind of sad. And there's a rehab loans in here as well. And we have a grant from the hospital authority for middle-income housing as well. So there's a lot of good programs if you have not, do not know if you qualify or if you're interested, get on our city website and go to the Grants Department. And there's a lot of detail about how all these grants work and what you can apply for and what's available out there. 143 is just various, various grants that come in. This is, this is, this year the capital, well, no, it was last year. The capital was for Mid-America Park expansion, 500,000, there were already 790 there. Terry continues to get grants from the department, the National Park Service. National Park Service is where she's been getting that grant money. 157, 157 is our capital improvements account. That's where the quarter penny that we currently have for capital improvements in the city. Some people say you're getting, you're getting roughly revenue of a million dollars for capital improvements. But remember, this, most of this money goes to pay for the Reed Center and the Delta Hotel. Principal and interest on their payments to pay for those facilities on loan payments. So we, for the whole city, we get, we get roughly 1.1 million dollars for, for all capital projects in this entire city. So the infrastructure is 760,000, that's a number I use a lot because that is the specific, the specific piece of that. For 23, 24, we are doing the 29th Street Bridge Engineering, Signal Phase 6 Engineering, and replacing the bridge bearing on 36 that's got to be replaced. It's becoming functionally obsolete, I think is the O dot word they use for that.
What's the bridge on 29th Street?
29th Street is the, Vaughn, I'll make sure I get this. Yeah, right by Sam's, it's, what's it called?
We're getting, that's Cherry Creek.
You can't see it, you don't know it's there, but it's.
It comes off the Tinker Golf Course and goes underneath 29.
And you can see last year, we spent two point, over $2 million, most of these are matches for Brandon going out and working hard to find, find federal grant money. Mid-year, I didn't spend all this money this year for a reason because.
He did that earlier.
I did that.
Where are you tripping?
Oh. Somebody needs to check his iced tea over there.
We're going to do a breathalyzer on him.
So mid-year, we're going to have, we have water line issue, I guess at Reed. There's some Habitat for Humanity, street work that may need to be done. That, remember, there's half-street improvements are required, but there's some city issues over there too. So I'm anticipating some of that here, just in Friendly Road, there's some issues over there too near Reno. So anyway, just saving back.
Those in obvious doesn't qualify, by the way.
All right, we'll get into the Water Fund now. Next is the Walker Fund. This is a water rate, in the water rate, there's designated money for capital. There's about 487,000 in revenue, 260,000 in expenses. You can see last year, we spent a lot of money, some of that was earmarks and ARPA money. Remember, we got money from Cole's Office. And then we got the ARPA money for the horizontal well, so that's why that's such a huge number of $4 million. For this year, we're looking at, you can see 259,000 out of Walker for pickup, for meters, for case backhoe, one ton crew cab pickup, and then 100,000 emergency repairs. We are expecting, we try to, there may be some other opportunities for matches. As you're looking at the federal, the federal government this year, the Biden administration is thinking, is focusing on clean water versus wastewater. We really put in for some wastewater stuff for pipe bursting. So really, there may be some opportunities for water infrastructure. So if there is, I want to make sure there's a little bit of money if I need to go find something to do and match. Next is construction loan payment. This is the 57 cents on the water bill on system improvement fee. Once again, this is match money. We're using, we're using to hit more matches on the water system. You can see we did the WRTA 25% water improvement, which is 1.6 million dollars for that. East Side Distribution, Phase 4 Rehab Wells, roofs at the water plant. So for this year, we're looking at 556,000 of the 760 for replacement valves, horizontal water well rehab and roofs at the water plant. We didn't have enough money last year to do the roofs. So we only missed it by 316,000 and we budgeted 134 last year. Any questions on that? That is, next is 184, Sewer Backup Fund. This is just, this is our benevolent sewer fund in the city. So remember, we are, we are basically self-insured on general liability. We have a $250,000 self-insured retention. And we have a coverage up to $3 million for general liability. Our reinsurance company is, and I probably should talk about this under risk, but it'll save me some airtime when I get to risk. But our reinsurance company, with all the costs of litigation in federal court, the huge settlements that are going out, has basically almost non-renewed us. So they raised our SIR from 250,000 to a million and a 10% copay. So like 1.2 million is our deductible with a $3 million max. And I'm like, and I'm sitting on that state's insurance board, I'm there, in charge of their financing and audit committee, and I'm like, really? So there, it is kind of frustrating, but they have to, they have to maintain the fiduciary responsibility of sitting on that board, is making sure that they, they meet all the requirements of being a captive insurance pool out of Connecticut. And that's where these things are filed at, and you have an actuary that you have to meet certain standards. And so they are, they are really changing the way they do business because the cost of the claims and the cost of the reinsurance now, as a result of the claims that have been paid out, has really gone up dramatically. So we're looking at, we're looking at direct coverage. Right now, we have property coverage with OMAG, workers' comp is with National American, and then, or Safety National, I'm sorry, Safety National. And then liabilities with state's insurance, so I'm getting quotes for all those. And I'll evaluate that and bring that back to the council in the month of June. But this, this specific fund is, if you have a tort claim, that is, in the cities at fault, you can file a tort claim and up to 125,000 in property damage. Rarely do they get there. There's some, an attorney you see on TV all the time filing all these cases, that's a discussion for another day. But if the city's not at fault, we can still pay for some of these claims, the damage to your house through this benevolent sewer fund. I think there's some rules, but I think it's up to about $2,000 of damage that goes through our risk management office. So it's a really, we don't always take the money, it's a minimum of $50,000 and I think it's 10 cents a customer until we get back to 15,000. But it's there for people that had sewer backups to help them that really aren't tort claims. It's a good fund, it's something that not many people do. I don't know who came up with this idea, this was here when I got here, but it's, it's really, it's something that we're doing for our citizens that other people don't do. Next is 180, Sewer Construction. This is, this is our, where our 90 cents on the ordinance that we talked about last council meeting goes to pay off the sewer treatment plant, which was scheduled to pay off March of 2025. We know it's going to pay off sooner than that, this has the AM schedule in it. And we transferred some, some GO bond money in here. But overall, this was, was really to pay, pay for sewer treatment improvements, the fiber installation, the SCADA hardware, Wave Tech media, that's the media that we're having issues with, the MBVR issues at the plant. And then we have 23rd Street Sewer Line Service to help with some of the ARPA money that came through. So from this point forward, as the money goes in there, it will be able to use not just for, remember, this money was to supplement the sales tax. So the sales tax is supposed to pay the AM schedule, and if it didn't, it's ninety cents is to pay for that and to continue finishing the sewer construction piece of this. So this money will be able to be used for the infrastructure that we need out there. One eighty seven is utility services. This is Sarah H. to my right. This is her, this is, this whole department is, is funded from fines and penalties and cutoff fees. So it is, we're not increasing any personnel. It is paying for itself, revenue of one point one million, expenditures of one point one million, one point four, so it's within thirty thousand of balance. There's a little bit of fund balance there. We held a position open for part of the year, but we have, we're in the process of filling that position now. Next is one eighty eight, Capital Sewer, the Straffman Fund. This is, this is money that comes in from the sewer, the sewer bills, the, and it's there for capital improvements to this, to the sewer system. It can be used for operations. We've never wanted to use this for operations. That's what the, what the, the utility cost is for, for one, I don't know, what's it, one ninety one, I think. But anyway, so you can see, we use it for capital. We've used it for lift stations, sewer crossings, replacing manholes, trucks, sewer upgrades at, at our Sooner Rose, Carburetor Alley for, we did some match money to get the sewer line put in there, and you can see that there's construction going on now. And for next year, we're going to, right now, we need to focus on pipe bursting. It's something that, that I think I've talked about before, just in the original square mile, there's twenty two million dollars of pipe bursting that is calculated that's needed in there. And so we, this is an area we can use for pipe bursting. It'll be something, we can use some of that money for sales tax that if we continue, or move, or continue the sales tax and move it to capital infrastructure. But right now, we need to really focus on the main lines that are throughout this city. And we can use it for match money and earmarks through the year if we get an opportunity for earmarks as well.
Does the council understand what we mean by pipe bursting? It's a non-dig replacement of a sewer line. They take, they take a, a large tool and they hook PVC pipe to the end of it and a cable, and they literally pull it through the old line, and it breaks apart the old clay tile sewer line and pulls a brand new PVC pipe down that same path. And so it's, it's a non-dig, a way to not dig up your backyard, Ms. Eads, in the original mile and, and replace your sewer line from one end of the block to the other.
It's similar to what they did when they were trying to modify the gas lines too, and they just pipe those through type of thing without digging it up. They just blow it through there essentially.
To an existing line.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Next is Utilities Capital Outlay, one eighty nine. And the revenue for this comes from, come from the Sooner Town Center loan. So this is, this is where the council decided for the, we get a little piece of that for, for doing the, if you remember, we did a thirty year loan instead of re-amortizing it every ten years, which is more of a commercial piece of paper, and we couldn't do that any longer at Sooner Town Center, so we did the loan. And so we get a percentage of that cost to carry that loan, and so it goes into this fund, and we chose to put it in here to help with Utilities Capital Outlay, which is a, is a need. So right now, we're paying for the AMRS system. That's the automated meter readers that was all computerized. There was a loan that was one point three million dollars at three point seven five percent interest. It'll mature in twenty twenty five, eleven one, and that'll be out of here. So that is what's paying for that payment. And also, you can see on the next page, ninety five, just that, the CNG loan, or the CNG station, that's pretty much, that money's through. We got a grant for that. There's some interest money, the sanitation transfer station, that money is in here. We ended up not upgrading the transfer station. Instead, we did direct, we're doing direct haul. We still use the transfer station, but just for very limited use. But there, there's money there that was put aside for that project in the transfer station. It resides here. One ninety is our sanitation account. It is revenue of eight point four million, expenditures of eight point one million, about a four and a half million dollar fund balance. There was a day in time when that fund balance was eight or ten million dollars, Vaughn, over the years. The cost of, the cost of sanitation trucks are almost like the cost of fire trucks. They're like four hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a side loader now, four seventy five for an automated side loader, and then a grapple truck is two eighty. So that's, that's the two major capital expenses. Obviously, the cost of personnel's in here, two new trucks. We have, we do have the bulk rate. We, we need to talk about that at some point. That's number four on my list is a bulk rate increase. I think we're charging fifty five dollars a half hour for that, and at some point, we're going to, we're going to need to increase that. We don't need to do any rate increases to sanitation, but we do need to look at, at that. The bulk rate, well, that's the special pickup, is fifty five an hour. The bulk rate is, so we do the quarterly pickups, the bulk pickups. Now that people have really gotten used to using that, we're seeing greater and greater and greater use, and we're going to have to maybe start a second truck. So this grapple truck will help us do that. We're not replacing a grapple truck, we're adding a grapple truck, but just letting you know. I mean, we, we may have to, I don't know if we're going to need to add personnel at some point on that or not.
We're, we're, we're seeing volumes at the curb that we never predicted would be there. I think we built the model around twenty five percent participant, participation, and we're seeing closer to fifty percent participation now. So it's, it's very popular, great service, but the costs are, are being driven by the participation.
And why don't you, well, I'm going to, I'm going to get my break for the night. I want you to talk about recycling and where we're at with that program.
Sure. You're going to see some contract extensions coming up in, in the next couple of council meetings. There's a lot of uncertainty in the world of recycling right now. Some commodity markets are starting to return, seeing a little bit of improvement in plastics, but not much. Cardboard remains the only recyclable that is actually profitable to recycle. All the rest of them, the, the companies lose money on, on recycling, significant money. We're going to, we're going to propose to you to do, do a couple of extensions. One of the reasons we, we want to extend the contract at least one more year, and we're probably going to look at a multi-year. We can get a better rate if we extend it multi-years. They're going to, they're going to offer a lower rate. The second thing is, because it takes so long now to get a sanitation truck, we want to give a year's time to bid the recycling contract and give a potential new vendor time to plan if they win the contract. We want to be in a position to let them have plenty of time to plan because it may take them as long as two years to get a truck to service our, our city, if it's a new company. Let's just say X company's doing it now, Y company may win the bid, and they need to have time to plan. So we're going to bring forward some recycling contract extensions in the next couple of meetings. And then also, the other objective is, is we want to give a little bit of time to see if this post-COVID recycling world returns a little bit. You know, the big problem was pre-COVID was China. China stopped buying our recyclables, and the, and the market value of those commodities tanked. We, it's on the rebound. We think it's continuing on an upward trajectory, and we want to give a little bit more time to see if it returns. Everything that we can get, that we, if we can get value back into the recyclables, the plastics, the aluminum, the cardboard, that lowers the cost for our citizens to pay for that service at the curb. If we were to, if we were to bid it today and give a new contract, the price would be, I won't, I won't use any crazy adjectives here, but the price would be higher than what the citizens are paying right now by quite a sum, we're being told, because those commodities are just, there's just no market value for them.
At what point in time? I actually called Paul today and talked to his advice about this very same thing because the increase in, in the, in Republic's bid. At what point in time do we pull the plug on this? I mean, two years ago, Paul stood at that podium and told us that, you know, at some point in time, it may not be worth us going forward with recycling. And, and we're starting to get some inquiries from citizens on, on that same line. So obviously, this is a valued service, and it's valued by a lot of people, but at what cost? You know, when are you going to come to us and say, we can't do this anymore?
That's, I wish I could look into my crystal ball and give you an answer, Mayor.
I, I know it's an unfair question, but.
It's not an unfair question.
It's on people's minds.
It's not an unfair question. It's a very fair question. It's just a difficult question to predict and come up with an answer. I think there'll have to be a balance there between what our citizens are willing to pay for the service and what we're going to have to pay to provide the service. And at some point, if things don't change, I think we will see our citizenry rise up and say, hey, enough is enough. There are cities nationwide who are canceling their recycling contracts, right and left.
Just two weeks ago, Citizens of Moore voted down recycling.
Yeah, and it's just because it's becoming cost prohibitive.
Well, and there are also a number of municipalities who are offered a recycling program. The trucks are running it as a recycling program, but the honest reality is, it's ending up in the landfill anyhow.
That's very true.
Because they do not have anybody to purchase those items, so they are, it's still listed as recycling. People put it out as recycling, but when it gets transported away, it's actually transported to the landfill just like trash is.
Well, just like.
And, and yet, it's being billed under recycling and at that cost level. And I apologize for.
No, you're right. You're spot on.
And so in fairness, you know, also, to, to go back to that point, time moves fast now, and I don't remember if it was a year ago or two years ago at this point, but we had Paul down here talking to him about the possibility of looking at other recycling contractors back then because we had already seen such an uptick in what Republic was charging us for the recycling. So I'm kind of sad that we're looking at not seeing the numbers, and maybe you've seen them, Mayor, but.
Well, it's, it's up to one point one now.
I mean, but.
That's, that was eight hundred thousand less than I actually looked at this.
But, but we've seen it, I mean, it's, you know.
The slope's pretty steep.
It's been a long day. I hope this, when you chart it out, I mean, it's just an uphill tick.
It's on the check.
And, and it's a significant incremental uphill tick. As a concept, I mean, as a person, as a citizen also, I mean, I support the concept of recycling, but the unfortunate reality is, you know, what, what we first started to become dissatisfied with is, despite the fact that we had the contract with Republic that offered us glass recycling and so forth, they took that away from us, even though our contract said we had that ability, because they couldn't market it, basically. It was, it was about their bottom line. But they are charging us.
The same.
The same.
More.
And more, exactly, Mr. Sullivan.
We were just.
I mean, so I, I do agree with what the mayor is saying. I mean, I kind of think, I don't know if this is too fast to do this. I'm just going to speak off the top of my head really quickly, but I mean, we're, we're going to push to take the aspect of continuing our sales tax to a vote of people. I mean, and I don't think it's something that requires a vote of the people, but I think when we're staffing these town halls.
Bring it up.
Perhaps we should be staffing these issues.
You know, we could be, I mean, while we're out talking to the neighborhood associations and the town halls, I think it's a fair, fair discussion. We have to be a little careful, we don't do too many mixed messages.
Right, but I'm just.
Or a survey, because we, we did a survey, Susan, if you remember.
Yes.
That got us into this.
Well, we did the survey also with regard to bulk trash, because I pushed us to get bulk trash pickup because there's so many people without the capacity to take things to the transfer station, and we knew the transfer station was aged, for lack of a better way to phrase it. So, I mean, again, and, and we did not expect that the participation was going to be as fervent as it turned out to be, which I'm happy, I mean, we're, we're providing a good service, but ultimately, again, we can't go into the red with providing that service. So, you know, we have to look at balancing, and, and if this becomes a balancing issue where, I mean, we're not talking a paltry sum. I mean, you know, well, Go, I was talking about thirty five thousand dollars, this is a significant amount of money. Three hundred thousand dollars is a very significant amount of money that we could use for something else. And so if it's not something our citizenry really sees the value in continuing, then why not, while we're going out there and we're talking about, okay, I mean, we're being good stewards of the public fiscare. We're coming to you to say, we need these sales tax dollars to continue because this is what we need to deal with it, and we're also going to put twenty percent towards parks. And maybe it's not appropriate to get too many issues involved, but while we're holding these meetings anyhow, why not throw it out? Or I saw earlier, and I don't think this is the right one, that we pay a certain amount for the inserts in the utility bills to a contractor company. So, you know, using one of those inserts to survey.
We could, we could use that.
We could do the community survey for that. We could have a whole section on recycling.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we put it in this community survey we're going to do.
I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, that like.
There's a lot, I mean.
You'd get a lot more response from that because, I think you'd get a lot more response because not everybody's part of a neighborhood association, and not everybody's going to come to the town hall meetings, but most everybody gets a water bill.
Yeah, we, we could do some community surveying on that. One of the other things Ms. Eads triggered was my third thing that we want to buy some time, is what I'll call it, for lack of a better word, is we want to explore some other s, other options. There is the option that we could pick up the recyclables. The problem right now is, we would have nowhere to take them because the, the, the place that sorts the stuff, it's called a, a MRF, don't forget what the acronym stands for, but anyway, they have a sole source contract with Republic. That contract is about to expire. And so if they become an option for us to haul the recyclables to them ourselves, we want to look at picking it up at the curb. We think we can actually do it cheaper.
And we had that conversation before, but we've also had a conversation that's resulted about, you know, like the, the campaign for, what sort of verbiage I'm looking for you, I like, cleanest recyclers, like we did the audit.
Super recycling.
Super recyclers, thank you, ma'am.
Which I did not get because of her, by the way.
I did.
I got it. I'm not bitter.
Because otherwise, we get penalized for it.
Exactly right.
And it ends up in the landfill anyhow.
That's right.
If it's dirty or contaminated, as they call it, off to the landfill.
Off the landfill it goes. If it's bagged, off to the landfill it goes.
Right, so there's so many, you know, that's the other thing with contracts, while we're getting this exponential cost increase, you know, we're getting dinged right and left with regards to, okay, you know, if it's contaminated, away it goes. So people are spending their time to honestly recycle, but it's really not benefiting the planet. I mean, I don't say that in a contrite manner, but it's not benefiting the planet because it ends up in the landfill anyhow. So I mean, I just think maybe while we're seeing this, we need to have an honest conversation with the citizenry, because other people have raised that issue that, that Matt was voicing of hearing it from citizens about, hey, you know, where's the breaking point type of thing.
Yeah, but we'll put that.
I would, I would caution, I would caution against. I would caution against rolling that out right now, but we do need to start having that conversation.
Yeah, we just bought ourselves a year, and that's really...
And call it up.
Respectfully, I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, no, you're fine, but it's something we need to start looking at. And another cost benefit analysis, you know, are we getting our, you know, this is 1.1 million dollars we're looking at for just recycling services. Are we paying for two sanitation services? Because the only thing, like he said, the only thing that's getting recycled is cardboard and high-grade plastics.
And respectfully, I mean, I'll leave the timing of the rollout to those way smarter than me that are in this room, but I do think it's worthwhile for us.
Yeah, it's time to have a discussion about it.
We need to have a solution before we cut our nose off, though.
Yeah. That's why we want to buy some time.
Yeah. Okay, we'll...
Put a pin in that one thing.
Got it. Okay, 191 Water. So, Water is the fifth one on my list, the last one on the list, as far as you look at our revenue at 7.4 million, which is 7.9, we're about 434,000 upside down in this account. We have some fund balance, so we have some, a little bit of time here, but we only spent four or 500,000 in capital, and, you know, this is, this is an area that, we have an escalator. Back in 2016, the council put an escalator on these rates, but they didn't ever, they never did a rate adjustment, and really, the rate adjustment should have been done with the escalator. I'm not sure how that happened, but it did. So, it's probably, I mean, we've added three meter readers to this budget, and I don't know what to say, it's upside down. We're going to have to, we're going to have to do a rate adjustment at some point in here to balance this fund. We took half the capital, I cut half the capital out of here, and the AMR loan, which was 167,000, so, and put that over to the Walker Fund that we talked about earlier, I think it was 172, because, I mean, we would have really significantly aided into the fund balance, so...
One question, where, did we abandon, and Sarah, I think you and I talked about, did we abandon our automatic shut-off, our electronic shut-off program?
No, I mean, the electronic shut-off, we put so many in that we could afford, and in all new houses, we require them to put the automatic shut, the one that you can remotely...
Right.
Shut off, which is the Allies. But as far as buying new Allies, I don't know how many new Allies we're buying. They tripled, here's the problem, they tripped, once we bought the original ones, like after they got out of contract, they tripled the price. So, those Allies are really expensive.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's nice.
And I assume the meter readers are, since we've got all electronic meter readers, or meters, they're just out troubleshooting? Are they actually reading meters?
They troubleshoot.
They're troubleshooting, they're doing shut-offs.
Turn-ons.
Broken meters, broken, they're, and we used to have, how many do we have?
We used to have about...
Four or five.
We probably ought to rename those positions, because that's really not accurate.
Yeah, it's not really what they do.
That's not what they do.
And I don't know if that's what we call them.
Water technicians.
Yeah, I should be careful here, because I doubt if you, no, does say meter reader. Yeah, we'll come up with a different name.
They'll do minor repairs, shut-offs, turn-ons, they have a variety of...
Yes.
What a thought.
They have with line locates, that's okay.
And page 101 is just the 442,000 that we pay towards, well, this is, yeah, it's the whole year. So, we pay towards the Dell City Water Line as a part of COMCD, when one of the cities has a main line that has to be replaced, we get to share in that, all the, all three cities share in that cost. So, if we ever, when we have a main line replacement, Norman in Dell City would help us with that as well.
That's a main line coming from the lake.
Yeah, coming from Thunderbird. 192, and this is...
102.
Which is on page 102, Fund 192.
We skipped a lot while you were wrong.
So, this fund's in, this fund's in good shape. You guys had adjusted it two years ago with an auto rate increase and a CPI escalator, which we have in the other funds. It's got 8.6 million in revenue and 8 million of expenditures, 4 million dollar fund balance. So, it is nice to say we have one of these where it really needs to be. So, capital outlay, once again, this isn't a place you take pipe bursting out of, but it is, it is for maintenance, for the line crew and for the plant and operations of Next is 193 on page 106, Sarah.
Thank you.
It's the Municipal Utilities Authority. This is where we have, we have put grants and transfers in, just, this is another one of TAT's favorite accounts, is moving money into these funds. I really don't have a revenue source, but it's just, this is what we inherited to you, to you, that's all I can tell you. So, the Utilities Authority actually owns the Soldier Creek Industrial Park. They are the owners. As we sell land, as we, as we deal with site improvements, that this is where money will flow through. So, right now, within, from 2022-23, you have the skip utility, the site improvements are for skip utility needs, and then the railroad spur for American Glass, there's 583,000, we're looking for grant money and other ways, because that's going to be over a million dollars to put that spur in, that's not even going to touch it. But we, we have a start there, and that money had been put there a long time ago. So, and then projects to be approved is probably for the engineering of that spur is what we'll have to use that money for. Next is Downtown Redevelopment. Right now, there's no revenue in this. This is, this is where we have moved money in to downtown to do the sewer project, the MAC was, money was done there, the sewer line extension on 29th and Douglas, which is the 8800 Southeast 29th, when that develops, we'll have the money to pay for the sewer line that's going to need to be extended. And then, we moved money here for the Town Center Park, Dog Park. This is where the Dog Park money that was originally going to be sidewalk money, that we put in for the Dog Park that is now complete and being used. And the first day that was opened, I walk up there and they opened the gate, and there were three people with three, with dogs, ready to go in there, just for the record. So, good job, Ms. Eads. 195, the Hotel and Conference Center. This is Ryan Rushing's problem now, not mine anymore. I did this for so many years, my gosh. So, you know, it's all about, it's all about attracting business to Midwest City, it's about putting heads in beds, but it's also about getting conferences, and what that money goes into the economy of this town. You know, those people come in here, they spend the night for multiple days for a conference, they eat here, they shop here, and I can't capture that, but it's money. I mean, it's significant money that's influx into our economy. But conference centers don't make money. I don't care if it's Oklahoma City, I don't care if it's Las Vegas, I don't care if it's Phoenix, because I've talked to all the people that run those conference centers, and they lose a lot of money. It's not their purpose, their purpose is to bring business into your community, bring visitors. So, we are anticipating that, and I'll believe this when I see it, that we'll have 5.4 in revenue, 4.5 in expenses. So, that would bring this account from a negative account to a positive account. And I hope, and I hope that it does bring this level of revenue in. The Delta is, is a really, really nice project. It turned out really nice, and it's something the community can be proud of. The conference center is in excellent condition, we continue to do things to it, and we make these updates from the next Fund 196, the FF&amp;E Reserve, we take, I think, under our franchise agreement with Marriott required, I think it's 2% of all revenue goes into this fund. So, the more money you make, more money goes into this fund. So, and it's used to update the property. You can see the heat pumps, walk-in coolers, boiler replacements, coffee machines, HVAC, you name it, this is the operating, this is furniture fixture and equipment to operate the Hotel and Conference Center. Next is the golf course. I think somebody had a question on golf that you had. So, this is, this is the epitome of why GO bonds work, because we took a golf course that barely, it's in an enterprise fund, this is an enterprise fund, it barely broke even at best. We've had loan-up money over time, we've had to buy golf carts and do other things for it, but this is when you go in and spend, how much money did we spend on that project, Vaughn? Five million?
Five million, counting equipment.
Five million dollars. We have the nicest public greens in Oklahoma City, probably some of the nicest greens in the state of Oklahoma, very comparable to any public or any private course even in the state. It's incredible, incredibly popular with not just Midwest City residents, but with residents from all over the place that come here and play this golf course. So, it's amazing to see the transformation of revenue versus expenses for 2022-23, 2.2 million versus 1.3 million. That is amazing. In all my years, I never, it's just phenomenal what they've done, and looking at revenue and expenses, and this, this includes the nine-hole Hidden Creek as well. This is all put together in one budget. It's separated, but it's still, this front cover sheet is the entire budget. So, it is, it's really amazing. We put their debt service in there, we've put that debt service off for a while, we won't take that debt service until late in the year to make sure that nothing changes. I don't want to take it until late, very late in the year, late in the fiscal year. But anyway, just, just amazing. So, great, great job to staff, great job to the council for doing this, and great job to our citizens who voted to invest in their community. And I can tell you, the dollars that are being spent in our communities as a result of that golf course would be very shocking to you, because there's a lot of people, you can't, it's hard to get a tee time, these people are coming from everywhere, and they're eating here, they're playing around the golf, they're eating here, they see Sooner Town Center, we have a great place to shop. This is, this is an amazing amenity for our city, so.
I think Sarah had a question that was...
Oh, she did.
Specific numbers, I think.
All right.
I can follow up separately via email, and definitely make sure that the resident has answers. I'm a little too tired, Mr. Sullivan.
Okay. I think, I think in general...
Did I wear you guys out?
In general, in general terms, Ms. Bana, I think the gist of the question was about cost increases, increases in fund balances, and Tim hit the nail on the head, this thing is a hit, and people are coming from all over, and it's hard to get a tee time. But the more golf you sell, the more it costs to sell that golf. We've had to put on a few extra part-timers to maintain the golf course. We've had to, well, we just recently had a $150,000 expense, we lost a lot of grass because of the winter, the cold winter we had. So, for everybody that walks through that clubhouse and buys a green fee, they buy, they buy maybe two or three beers, a soda, a Gatorade, a bag of chips, a hot dog, so the more people that flow through the golf course, the more your expenses go up. So, I think in general terms, that kind of answers the constituents' question.
Chemicals went through the roof, too.
But if you need, just send me an email or we need to talk on the phone, we can. Chemical costs, oh my goodness, it's crazy.
201 Urban Renewal, I'll talk a lot if I don't keep going here. Get him on the golf course.
I'll just give you the other...
Next year, Ryan and Vaughn are going to present their departments, by the way, so we'll get a change up from having to listen to me. Urban Renewal 201, that's our rent from Taco Bell and Raising Canes. It's revenue about 57,000. We've really put most of that in, in the professional services, which are really legal fees to help us on urban renewal. Next is Risk Management. So, this is our, we're, as we kind of get on the self-insurance piece of this, I won't spend a lot of airtime, but roughly, this is, it shows revenue of 1 million and expenditures of 1.3 million, that, and it shows only a fund balance of 102,000. Just take into consideration that, that's a fully reserved program. We have IBNR. IBNR is incurred but not reported claims, those are claims we didn't know you were going to have, of over 300,000. So, there's a million dollars in there of, if we close the program down tomorrow, pay it off all the claims, then we would, we would actually have the 100, the million versus 1.3. So, it is really, it's okay, I would like it a little bit better. I don't fully burden the city departments with all the costs of that fund, and we're probably going to have to start doing that based on getting reinsurance. So, there'll probably be some changes. The next is Workers' Comp. Workers' Comp, a revenue of about 868,000, expenditures of 714. Once again, we have high-end retentions, about $400,000, $500,000 per employee before we hit the reinsurance. This is a well-managed fund, there's 3.4 million in there, we have IBNR and case reserves. Each year is accounted for in of itself as we manage this claim process. It is much, much cheaper doing it this way than going for direct insurance, we would not, it would be a huge number. Next, 220 Animals Best Friend. This is, this is revenue, we get donations, we get a little bit of fines and forfeitures on animal control tickets, and then we get rent. We are now officially a landlord, because we are renting our old transfers, I mean, our old animal shelter on 36th Street to Spencer. We had to do some little bit of updates that I had to fund to paint it and do some things, but they are using it. So, that's a good thing, because now we're not taking their animals in, because we're kind of maxed out where we're at right now with what we're doing, so it's a good...
Who's responsible for cutting the grass?
They will be.
They will be, which is a great relief as well, because the, that took officers off the street to go up there and cut that grass.
Also put the Safe Haven Vet Services in here, that's increased that number as we deal with so many. We dealt, it's amazing the amount of animals that we dealt with as far as surrenders from COVID, people working at home and then went back to work, and just, all of us, all of animal shelters were inundated. Next, 225's Hotel Motel, this is just the transfers out, but every time I said, here's 20, 14%, 56%, 30%, this is where it all came from. The money comes in here and out to Parks and Rec, Economic Development, and the Welcome Center. Customer Service Deposits, that's Sarah H. over here, this is just when people have to put deposits down for utilities, we eventually give them back after so much time, five years. Next is Court Bonds. There's a very small amount of court bonds that we manage. 240, page 124 for Sarah.
Thank you, it's helping you.
Is the L&amp;H account. We talked, I talked about that early on, that we had a rate increase of 4.5%. You can see I'm running this thing really thin, our revenue's at 10.9 million, expenditures at 10.4 million. It's amazing, $10 million to run a self-insured health insurance plan and have it reinsured. It is expensive, so, but it is a whole lot more expensive to go buy first dollar coverage somewhere, I can tell you. It's a great plan, it's a well, well-managed plan, it's direct with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, we're on their best networks. Our PBM costs are enormous, that's where our money's at, we're not going up much in claims, we're handling our claims well, but our PBM, which is our pharmacy benefit cost, I'm sorry, I don't mean the acronym, but our pharmacy costs are what have been killing us, and this, there's something we'll continue to work on, but I kept that rate increase as low as I possibly could. The actuary said we ought to take that thing up 9%, which would have been 4.5, 4.5 for the employees, I just didn't want to do that. I just didn't want to do that. We're in this high inflationary period. I'd run it, run it thin. We had a long talk with the retirees represented, with our committee, with retirees, police, fire, and some other city employees. They all unanimously voted to go with this rate increase, knowing that mid-year, if we have a, you know, really, really bad year, we could face some issues that we'll be back in front of the council to talk about. So it's.
The pharmacy medicine is up, but the rest of it is running good.
Yeah.
So isn't that kind of, if people are taking their medicine and it's.
Yeah, it's kind of a two-edged sword. You want people to take their medicine because it prevents the claims, and we push people to take medicine. We have the CRX program where if you have, you know, if you're diabetic and you, some of those diabetic pills are really expensive. You can go to Canada.
Shots.
Shots. But you can go to the Canadian contract that we have, we get, we give employees medicine that for no cost to them if they go through the Canadian pharmacy, as long as it's something we can get, comes directly from the manufacturer. It's not like these PBMs will say, well, you don't know what you're getting. That's not really true. This, the medicine we get in this contracts comes directly from Canada, from Australia, Great Britain. It comes from where this stuff is manufactured. Next is the Capital Improvements Revenue Bond. Once again, this is money in and out for the Hotel Conference Center and the Sewer Plant notes. Next is an old 2002 GO bond. Hopefully, we will never see this again, Tia, Tia. So, because we are way past spending all that money. Next is 2018 Election GO bond. So this is where we've gone through and managed all these tranches of money for all the GO bond projects and all their phases. Next, page 128 for 271's Proprietary Bond. So this is, this was, this was the last tranche of money. Is that right? No, this is GO bond. Yeah, that's right. This is the, this is the different tranches going through. So this was for golf and the booster station renovation. And then the next page is, it says 2022 issue. So this is the last one we did, which is the police fire training facility, so P4. So it had to go through its own separate fund. So as we spend this money, these will go away.
How much is on the list?
Please try it, Rainy?
Yeah.
August. I think they're on track to be done in August.
So October?
Yeah. Just two more weeks, two more weeks.
310 is our disaster relief. This is an important fund. We've talked about earlier, we're taking a little bit of Mike Stroh out. This is where we do our mowing, when we go out and contract mow and put liens on properties. So the money goes out of here and it comes back. I think we were, last time I checked, and this has been a couple of years ago, Sarah H., but I think we were getting over 90% of the contract money back through these liens. So this is really an effective methodology, the way we're using this, this fund. So this is also, why is there $4 million in here? Well, some of that's the fund balances, the ARPA monies we ran through here, but also we ran the ARPA COVID relief, we're all in here, $7 million. And then, so we had the original $1 million to pre-fund the disaster. So our last, our last ice storm, we were able to immediately jump in, rent iPads with the software, use our own employees to go out and do the, all the paperwork, the rating structures, all the collection material, and we get to keep that money. So we put it back in here to keep some fund balance in here for the next disaster, because there will be one. It'll be.
Did we ever get full reimbursement for that?
No, I don't think we've ever gotten the state money. We've got the federal money.
Got the federal, we didn't get state.
Did you vote?
Yeah, we'll get it. It's just a matter of time.
I'm not hoping.
We will get it. It might take two or three years, but we'll get it. Next is the 340, page 130. Oh, Sarah's not here. 340 Sales Tax Capital Improvements. So once again, transfers in, transferred out with, I don't know what more there is to say. I don't know why we have to do that in two places, but there must be a reason.
We can have, it's a long.
Okay, I believe you.
It's funding, it's just fund accounting, right, T?
It is.
That's the way it has to work.
You have to trust it, just trust the money.
Same with the GO bond debt service. All of the obligation bonds then run through here in all the year phases, and they're all managed through one spot. Next is the Sooner Rose TIF. That's the Tax Increment Financing District we did in Sooner Rose. We, in January 1, we brought on, remember, the only sales tax we get on this is from the Warren Theater. The rest of the money comes from Ad Valorem. So things have to be built over there for us to collect money to pay for the loan. So right now, the HTO, Mobeta's Marketplace, Olive Garden are now all coming on. They came on January 1, so we'll go through the year and then at the end of the year, we'll collect that. So next year, it continues to improve. We are having to backstop this out of 425, which is the hospital authority, for 584,000. That's a whole lot better than when I took over a city manager. It was about 780, $800,000. So over time, this is, this will balance. Two car washes, I guess we're having dueling car washes.
Do you have any, I'm on one of them, I'm on one of them.
That's true. Yeah, depending on which way you're going, which way you're exiting, it will be the way to go, because you don't want to have to cross that traffic. I'm not going to stir the seeds up on this one either, so.
Is it?
Keep going. 353, page 135.
Car wash heater.
Sometimes, you know, life is funnier. You can't make up stuff this.
My car wash doesn't have a heater, it's on the driveway.
And that was jealous, it has skin.
Now, my favorite was at Sooner Town Center, because you had the Fat Daddy's Restaurant next to Weight Watchers. That was like a classic.
When it first opened, yeah.
You did. It was awesome.
True story.
I'm just saying. All right. EDA 353, Mr. Coleman. This is where we get our participation in our preferred rent. We have roughly 185,000 expenditures, 1.3 million. So you can see, we, this is all economic development, this is contractual, we do the fireworks and holiday lights and all those things that really, there's, one day they need to go somewhere else, but they are in here. They are, they are economic development for our community, these events, but.
We could cut out the cost of fireworks if our residents would just donate theirs, ours, instead of shooting them off.
You could go to a tall hill and watch the horizon. Yeah, amen. So capital outlay, last year, we spent a lot of money. This is, this is all getting Project Oscar going, Sooner Rose, 23rd Street Sewer Line, this is all economic development. We are, we are still, we were woefully, woefully short, even though I wanted to use the ARPA money, this is a use, an appropriate use of the ARPA money for these activities for capital improvements, though they didn't go nearly as far as we thought. Paul Streets and Kerry, Kerry, how do you?
Everson.
Everson, I always want to say Severson, but anyway, Everson, they're continuing to work on some short-term loans to help, through the Water Resources Board, that'll help accomplish all these projects. And the good thing about if we do an OWRB loan through this fund, there's like, of the, like, of the 2.8 million we would get, 1.5 million would be forgivable. So we'd be crazy not to try to tap into some of this money, so I'm allowing them to do that, and I don't have to go find the money somewhere else. So, there's not many places to find that kind of money. Next, we'll get into hospital authorities. So 425 9010, that is your compounded principal. There's roughly 100, a little over $100 million in that account, though this shows, we, last year, we put 17 million in the hospital district. We obviously hadn't spent much of that, or you'd see buildings going up and things, more things happening over there, but it's, things are going through the critical path over there. There's, we're not really that far behind the critical path. So we're still very excited about the hospital authorities. This is a very, very, very much a joint project with us and SSM in going through this journey. We, let's see, one of the things in the hospital district that we did not account for was I didn't realize how old the water and sewer lines were and they were not in that 17 million dollar budget. So I included that in here, and that's really the only, the only item that I put in here. So through the, through the trust indenture, 2% of the discretion, 2% of the fund goes to, goes for discretionary and for hospital grants. So this year's hospital grants will be 531,000 for all your appointees and the chamber appointees. So that'll be a, that'll be a good amount of money to put in our community. And then the 1.5 million will go into the next account, which is on page 138, which is the 90-50 account, the discretionary account, which only can be used for economic development purposes through the hospital trust indenture. So we'll be spending money on Centrillium and an industrial park, the spur. We had some money, but we're going to need a lot more money than what was invested in the other funds in 353, which is economic development. So, and there's some projects to be approved. Once again, that is just to help us get through getting American Glass and getting Centrillium. We need to get them out of the ground, and that's what we're working on. We got to get water there and sewer there too, so there's a lot of work going on. And last year, I put some money into Carburetor Alley, which is, I still work under progress. And this is where the TIF subsidy came from, I just told you about the 584,000. Next is the 90-60 account. This is ROR Miscellaneous in lieu of account. Really what it should say is the rent account for SSM. This is where we get the million dollars a year in rent for the hospital, and this money is discretionary. You can see what I used it for last year, and you approved, was the capital outlay was for capital infrastructure. And really, this money should be really for more, this should be for quality of life stuff. This should be for things that improve our community. Not that there's anything wrong with what we're doing, but this is, this is, this is another, you know, last, last comment about the sales tax, but this is what that capital improvement sales tax should be paying for is, for all those items that are on there, and there's 2.6 million dollars worth of them last year. 425, last page, page 141, Sarah? Is the hospital grants. That's just where we place the money. One last thing I would, I did not put in the budget, but I've talked to you guys about, is an incentive for living in Midwest City. And I know that I felt like, you know, there was a lot of support for doing that. I just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add that in here in the final budget, and I'll send something out on that. So that's really all I have tonight.
I think you deserve a round of applause. That was three, four hours of straight education. Thank you so much, Mr. Lyon.
Absolutely. Hopefully I ask.
Yes, you deserve a round of applause.
Yeah, for staying here the whole time. And staying awake. Jeff, are you still awake?
You've been there.
Did I wear you out?
Yeah.
Did you hear that? I wore him out. I wore the newspaper guy out.
Okay, that concludes our budget presentation. Is there any further business to bring before this body? Hearing and seeing none, we are hereby adjourned. Good job, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your information.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.